Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, March 20th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for March 20th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Adrianne, I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stance: One nation, united ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to presentations. We have the COVID-19 update.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Mary Rose Corrigan, Public Health Director with the Health Services Department, here with your monthly COVID-19 update. So just to start off, our cases, the number of new cases reported is pretty much turning into a relatively flat line during March. We still have a fair amount of cases, and as I remind everyone, we, these are the cases that are diagnosed at the physicians and clinics and doctors' offices that are reportable. These do not include home test kits. So we are still seeing a fair amount of cases in the community, and this has kind of turned into a Sentinel marker to see if it's going up or down. So it's still out there, basically. The community level in Dubuque County is now low, and our transmission level is moderate. So you can see that the hospitalization admissions are down from where we were in January and the rates per 100,000 population. In terms of vaccinations, our, the percent of our entire Dubuque County population that has been fully vaccinated and has received a bivalent booster, that's the booster that is effective against the Omicron variants, is 20.5%. And although this may seem low or a little bit dismal, it's above the U.S. average, which is only 16.3%. And if you look at the Iowa map there, we're one of the counties that has one of the higher rates. So relatively speaking, we've done well. Would we like to see it higher? Yes, we would. And we know that the vaccines help save lives and decrease hospitalizations. So you're 14 times less likely to die compared to those who receive no vaccine if you're up to date on your vaccines, and you're three times less likely to die compared with those who received only the original primary dose of vaccine. So these are studies that are ongoing. This was released in mid-February. So we know that this is making a difference, especially our deaths. We've had, I believe, five since January 1st, so that line has really gone down. We're going to continue offering vaccinations in the community. VNA has been providing walk-ins on a regular basis, and they'll continue that on Fridays till further notice at this point. So President Biden has declared that the Public Health Declaration that started back in January of 2020 will be coming to an end on May 11th, 2023. So we're getting more details on what this exactly means. For the state of Iowa, it means that COVID-19 positive cases will no longer be reportable as of March 31st, 2023. So I won't have any, any numbers to share with you other than our Sentinel monitoring sites like we do with influenza in terms of what's going on. So that mandatory reporting will end. The Test Iowa mail-in test kits that do the PCR testing through the state hygienic lab will continue to be available at least through the end of the year. Wastewater testing is now available throughout the state courtesy of the state hygienic lab. Our Domo Dashboard, which is the software the public health workers can use to look at deaths, vaccinations, ages, all that information that I'm able to provide more details for you, will be discontinued at the end of this month. And then, of course, there are a number of things affected on the Medicaid front. In March 2020 through April 1st, 2023, Iowa Medicaid was required to maintain continuous healthcare coverage for Medicaid recipients regardless if they had a change during that time. And they didn't have to requalify and those kinds of things, like under normal, non-pandemic conditions. Well, that's changing, and that continuous coverage is going to end, like I said, April 1st. So the state Health and Human Services Department is planning on an unwinding period for that Medicaid continuous coverage, and everybody will basically have to enroll, re-enroll over a 12-month period. So there will be workers helping people do that. So that'll be a change for the Medicaid population and state workers, and our Crescent Community Health Center will help people with that also. Our influenza data shows that we are low, and it has gone down across the country. And influenza is one of those things that we don't mandatory report. We have Sentinel sites around the state and the country that report numbers that give us an indicator if activity is high, medium, or low. So COVID-19 is going to go into this monitoring system, and we call it influenza-like illness, diseases like influenza, RSV, parainfluenza, and some other things, and COVID will now be in there. And this will help us, as we always monitor during an influenza season, hospitalizations and influenza-like illnesses. It won't give us exact numbers, but that's the way it's going to shake out in Iowa. COVID-19 will become part of this system. And as you can see by the other graph there, our respiratory illness reported hospitalizations has continued to be very low. We have had 136 influenza deaths in Iowa this influenza season. So that's the updated information I have for you tonight. We're going to continue to receive more information on the unwinding and the declaration, the Public Health Emergency Declaration discontinuation. We are finalizing our after-action report, which is a report that'll detail how we did in our emergency response and our public health response during the pandemic, and it's my goal to present kind of some of the results of that to you at our second meeting in April. And then part of that report is also an improvement plan of how we're going to improve what we do in public health emergencies like COVID-19 and other ones that come up.
Thank you, Mary Rose. You, I'll start with a question here. You mentioned the last time you came before us that you were thinking, and you just, I mean, you basically just told us you're not going to have the same numbers anymore after the end of this month, and you had kind of suggested that maybe a monthly report was no longer necessary. I'd just be curious to hear your thoughts on that at this point.
Well, I don't know about necessary, but I really won't have very good information to report regarding exact numbers and Sentinel influenza-like illness report that I said. It, it really goes down in numbers and information after about April. There's very little activity typically during the spring and summer months for that. I can always update the council if something new emergence emerges on the COVID-19 front. The, the other thing we will find out is with the public health emergency, they will continue to distribute the vaccines as we have been through public health, and we'll do the ordering and distribution throughout the county. That will continue till the stockpile is emptied out across the country, and the thought is by then it'll be rolling towards fall. We'll probably need a new updated bivalent vaccine depending on what variants are circulating, and at that time they'll determine it will be covered by insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, and there's supposedly a plan being developed for those that are uninsured to have that available to them, and I'm sure our Community Health Center will have that available for their patients. So that's kind of yet to be determined.
Okay. All right. So it would make sense to me, and I guess I'm kind of looking around here to see what our thoughts are, that if there's information that we need and that we need to be sharing with the public, that would be a time to come before us to do that. As much as we've appreciated your, your daily and then weekly and then monthly reports over these past few years, I think it might be time to give you a little rest and not have to come in every single month to do this, unless anybody has any sort of...
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd propose that maybe we change it to a public health report and suspend it until October when flu gets moving around, and we'll probably have some new information on vaccines by then, and maybe hear from you October, every other month through the flu season on what those numbers are doing, because it's not just us hearing it when you stand there and tell the story. I think that might be useful. I think we're, I think we can get COVID out of top of mind, but we've still got people getting sick and dying of other things, and there are some measures that community members can take to reduce that risk every year, and wouldn't hurt to have some reminders. What do you think of that?
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. Well, and we look forward to seeing you again next month with the after-action report for sure, so.
Great.
Any other questions for Mary Rose? I want to give you a chance to talk about the shirt you're wearing, at least. I mean, I noticed it as you're walking up here. You might as well...
Well, I, I am a graduate of Clark University, and I'd like to congratulate them on their first-ever national championship in any sport with the women's basketball team last night. So great win for Dubuque, too. So that was a great achievement by the Clark Women's Basketball Team.
Absolutely. Yeah, I wanted to give you the chance to be able to do that as a proud graduate, so thank you very much, Mary Rose.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, appreciate the presentation. We can move on to consent items, Adrianne.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages two through four of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrianne. Do we have anyone in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening?
I'm here to talk about the Grand River Center contract.
That will be during public input. I'll make sure, I'll give you a look when that time comes up, because that'll be an action item, so we'll talk about that then. Thank you. All right? Any other consent? Yes, sir?
I'm here to talk about the proposed project at Dubuque Place, St. Mary's in Dubuque Place.
That will actually be its own public hearing, so we'll specifically be talking about that, and I'll ask during a specific time to come up and talk about that one, too. All right? So I'll look your way during that one. All right? Okay. Do we have anyone virtually to talk about consent items?
No online input.
Okay.
And no input received.
All right. Thank you very much. Back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at 7-0.
We will move on to items set for public hearing, and we have two. First is set public hearing disposition of city-owned property at 612 Lincoln Avenue for April 3rd, 2023, and second is set for public hearing Brem Acres voluntary annexation request for April 17th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at 7-0.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is request to amend planned unit development, 2600 Dodge Street, Plaza 20.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Waiting on my PC. I'm going to have to read off the card. Move to receive and file the document, the communications, and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted down for passage to council meetings, part of the meeting which is to be finally passed and be suspended.
All right. Got a motion by Jones, second by Rousell. Wally, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally Wernmuth, Planning Services Manager. As, as what the City Clerk Adrianne Brightfelder has indicated, we're requesting to amend the Plaza 20 planned unit development boundary and signage regulations. This is a request that came from Plaza 20 themselves. This map shows the location. This is the existing configuration of the Plaza 20 site. The area outlined in blue is the current planned unit development boundaries. Areas that are shaded in red are currently zoned C3 general commercial. That currently consists of the subway and the former Ed Fett Accounting Office area. There's a small portion of what Sonic, where it's located, and then also Starbucks, and then the motel located on that property. This is kind of a zoomed-in location, kind of call out some of those areas, but in addition, this also shows some of the signage that's located as part of the planned unit development. So what's being proposed is Subway is actually going to be relocating. There's a new building being constructed just immediately south of the Harbor Freight Building. From that location, they're going to, that building will be deconstructed. Ed Fett's building has already been deconstructed, and that site be adapted, reused for a new grocer that's looking to come into the community at that location. And as part of that, there's a freestanding sign that's associated with Subway that will go away, and in order to have signage for that additional relocation of Subway, they're asking to add signs to some current signs located in the Plaza 20, as noted here on the, on the design, most notably the one entry sign that's located closer to the Dunkin' Donuts sites as you come in. There'll be a new sign that'll be located specifically for the new grocer location. They'll have their own freestanding sign. That's a signage requirement that's being requested be amended for outlaw signage. And then there'll be some additional signage that'll be allocated to another sign located in the property to help identify those businesses. The properties that are being requested to be amended are the ones I mentioned before. It will be rezoned from C3 to PC planned commercial. This is actually a request that the staff had of the applicant when they came through to amend the sign regulations. We want to clean those boundaries up because it gets a little confusing when you have a building that's partially zoned C3, partially zoned as part of the planned unit development. Their both uses are permitted in both districts, but it just helps clean up those boundaries and make it a little bit easier for us to regulate those in the future and as, as development Once again, here's some pictures of the signage that we're talking about. The one here located will include adding 30 square feet, and it'll go from 100 square feet to 130 square feet, and then the sign to the right will add an additional 70 square feet and go from 250 square feet to 320 square feet. That's all I have with regards to the presentation. The zoning advisory commission did have, held a public hearing. They reviewed the request, and by a vote of four to zero, they recommend the City Council approve the rezoning request. And I bring the lights down.
That was, that was for effect. We did lights for effect, just for you, right at the, right at the close of your presentation there. Okay, thank you, Wally. Is that all you have, or did you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, we are in a public hearing to consider approval of a request from Michael Colley, Plaza 20, to rezone property located at 2600 Dodge Street, Plaza 20, to amend the Plaza 20 planned unit development boundary and signage regulations, and the zoning advisory commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone from the public to address us on this particular item? All right, seeing no one here, do we have anyone virtually? Okay.
And no input received.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring you back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I have to commend Plaza 20 for keeping the, the place fallen mostly looking good. When it came out left, it was a coin toss whether the area would survive or not, and obviously it did, and they've done well with it. But there's one wart, and that's the traffic pattern created by, the disastrous traffic created by Starbucks, and we've got barricades that have been there for years now and promises that that situation would be permanently remedied, and it's not yet. I'd like to have some assurance that that's going to be and going to be soon before we approve any additional growth to that plaza.
Sure. I have Gus, the city engineer, who's here to be able to address that comment for you.
Gus Ahoyas, city engineer. As part of an agreement we made with Starbucks after everything got completed in November, the city agreed to close that, so our engineer department's developing plans, and we'll get that out to bid this spring and clean that up for you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that doesn't, that's fine. That, that takes care of me. I applaud, I applaud your growth and, and good management of that facility.
Any others? All right. Seeing nothing further, we have a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Adrianne, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at 7-0.
Public hearing number two is request to rezone the property of approximately 2.4-acre irregularly shaped site with frontage along Carter Road to a planned unit development with PR planned residential designation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings, part of the meeting which is to be finally passed and be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Wally, back to you, please.
Sure. Wally Wernmuth, Planning Services Manager. The request before you is to rezone a currently piece of property that's currently zoned planned unit development with a PR planned residential designation. The property in question is located on Carter Road, located between Kane Street and Kaufman Avenue, as described. It is a little over two acres. The property is zoned PR planned residential, and historically throughout the history of the property, it's been rezoned several times. So prior to 1975, the, the property was zoned multifamily planned unit development, and then in 1975, when we did a comprehensive rezoning, it was rezoned to R4 planned unit development. 1985, it was rezoned to R4 multifamily residential, and then '93, there was a rezoning that was approved for a planned unit development that would allow a 16-unit, four-building condominium development that did not proceed. And then in 1996, which is the current zoning of the property, it was rezoned for a 64-unit senior housing development that did not come to fruition. So the request before you is actually to rezone this property in order to accommodate 40 residential units. There'll be in two buildings, one, two, three-story building and one three-story building. There'll be detached garages located on the property. So as you look at this, this aerial photo, the area that's shaded in blue is the two-story building. The area shaded in green is the three-story building. The area shaded in, in pink are 10 garage spaces, and the yellow area is the off-street parking lot for the property. Each unit is required to have one and a half parking spaces per unit. The site is compliant with regard to that. When we get involved with these conceptual development plans, we actually take them through our development review team process that get reviewed by our engineering department, building, planning, water, and fire departments. We had discussions with regards to emergency access to the site. I know there were some discussions or concerns with, with one access to the property. Our city engineer that reviews traffic and our fire department has reviewed the access location, and it's ideal to line it up across from Westmore Drive in order to provide access into the site. There was some discussion, should there be a secondary access? We have issues with separation from driveways and intersections, which cause confusing for traffic flow. And then also, there's concerns about safety, depending on where those locations of those accesses come into the property for that, for that property. This kind of shows the contours. All stormwater will drain towards the, to the, I would say, the southwest area. It does require a site plan review, so we, the development review team will be reviewing a stormwater report. Detention area will be required on the site. That will be all handled through that site plan review process, and that will be channeled into our, our storm sewer and address those concerns. Currently, right now, as water hits a site, it is a hillside, and it just all kind of runs down towards some of the property owners. These apartment buildings kind of located on Kane Street and then down into the Carter Road. Just kind of talk a little bit about the neighborhood. So the area outlined in pink is the proposed area to be rezoned. This large area where you see these multiple houses, that is the Pine Knoll subdivision condominium development. Currently, there is 49 units in that area. The area immediately north of the property, there's two four-plex condominium develop units, or two buildings that have four units in each. And then on the corner of Kane and Carter, there are two six-plexes for those properties. Immediately to the south of the site, there is an eight-plex, and this large area that you see here, it's got PR, that's kind of these three buildings and kind of a, a T-intersection shape area. That is actually 70, 79 units. There's quite a few units in that building. That's St. Mary's Apartments. So when we looked at calculating like density per acre in this area, the proposed development is going to be about 16.32 acres per unit, or 16.32 units per acre. A lot of the R4 areas to the north are either 22 units per acre for those, those apartment buildings, to six units per acre for the condominiums. Pine Knoll is about eight units per acre, and then also when you look at St. Mary's, they're, they're upwards of 19 units per acre. So it's, it's very compatible. It kind of fits in that middle range of the density in the existing area. In addition, it is accessed by multiple streets. Kane Street and Carter Road are actually identified as collector streets. Those are larger street configurations to help with traffic flow. They provide connections from subdivisions and access throughout our, our city. It's not classified as a local street, which are some of the side streets you might be identified. And then Kaufman Avenue is a minor arterial. That's where you're actually moving traffic from actually one end of the city all the way across to other portions of the city. So it is actually located on several higher travel network streets. We do review that, and we look at the impact from traffic. Our traffic engineer has reviewed the number of daily trips from the site, and it does appear that there'll be any, there will be a little bit of an impact to the traffic to the area, most notably, there'll be approximately 332 daily weekday trips and an average of 168 daily week, weekend trips for the site for this 40-unit development. However, Carter Road currently handles 4,780 vehicle trips per day. I know there is some discussion and concerns with school traffic that's located in the area. Waller, Mazakelli, and Arlay, Guadalupe Campus is located on Kane Street. Currently, students that will be living in this facility most likely would, would walk to school in that location, not necessarily they could drive or be dropped off. However, if other school districts are being used, they're most likely, if they were to exit or leave the site, they'd either be riding the bus or traveling via car, via Carter and Kaufman. It seemed like a lot of the concerns that we had with regards to traffic was primarily It seemed like a lot of the concerns that we had with regards to traffic was primarily residents that were located on Kane Street. And that just is kind of common nature that comes with living in close proximity to the school district, especially with pickup and drop-off. There are high traffic volumes that happens with that daily occurrence being in close proximity with the school on that site. The engineering department did review that and see if there had to be additional traffic control that would happen in the area, and that's not, that is not going to be required for this development. So we look at the impact on our comprehensive plan. This is an infill and mixed-use development, which helps achieve that goal that we have with the comprehensive plan. We do have adequate utilities in the area to service the area with city water and sewer. As I mentioned, I went over the traffic. Carter Road is defined as a collector street. It's not a local street, which we would have more concerns, but the design, the capacity of that street is more than adequate to handle the number of vehicle trips from the proposed development. We went over the surrounding development, which includes multifamily residential. There is single-family residential development on the north side of Kane Street into the west side of Carter Road. This is a map that I wanted to include in the documentation. We received a petition from property owners, and we helped prepare this in our GIS map. The area shaded in green are areas that are opposed to the rezoning, and they actually reside outside our 200-foot notification boundary, and I'll have to explain why that's, there's a situation with how we calculate opposition. There are areas that are shaded red. Those are property owners that are within 200 feet of the area to be rezoned, and they have signed the petition or provided a letter of written opposition to the request. And then also, we have some areas that are shaded purple. Those are tenants, not property owners. But the reason why I need to bring this to your attention is when we have more than 20% of the area within 200 feet of the property to be rezoned, if they're in opposition to the request, that forces a supermajority vote at the city council. So six of the seven members would have to approve the rezoning in order to approve the property. It's not a simple majority vote as you typically would see, but based on our ordinance, because there's 20% of the land within 200 feet of the property, that forces that supermajority vote at this council level. And that's all I have. With regards to the zoning advisory commission, they did hold a public hearing. The applicant did speak on his application, explained the request to the zoning advisory commission. There was three public comments, which expressed concerns with regarding to the number of units, the heights of the building, increased noise, lighting, overflow, stormwater, runoff, parking, and a desire for privacy fencing. So with regards to screening and fencing requirements, our unified development code does not require residential property to be screened from residential property. That is the same situation with all these surrounding properties that are around there. All those condominium developments do not have a requirement to screen their properties from the adjoining properties. That could be something that could be placed as a condition. The commission did discuss it briefly. They did not place a condition on any additional screen requirements for the site. A lot of concerns get involved with lighting from the property as part of our site plan review. We do require 72-degree cutoff luminaires and the intensity of the lighting at the property lines. If this property was zoned to R4, the setback would actually be four foot from the side property line. These buildings are going to be located, the closest would be 23 feet from the adjoining property. There are some areas where there are some easements that are located along the north side property line where fencing and trees would not be, would not be allowed to be planted due to public utilities. But we do have landscaping requirements for a number of trees that have to be planted on the site, shrub requirements, parking lot landscaping, some other things that come associated with that aspect of the property. So as I indicated to you, the zoning advisory commission voted on the request, and by a vote of three to zero, they recommend the city council approve the request. We did have one commissioner that had abstained from the vote due to their association with the project. However, due to the number of individuals that are in opposition to the request in the area, it does force a supermajority vote at the city council. That's all I have unless you guys have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of a request from Kevin Oberbrockling, CK Construction, to rezone property of approximately 2.4 acre irregularly shaped site with frontage along Carter Road. The property to a planned unit development with PR planned residential designation, and the zoning advisory commission is recommending approval. So now, this is your opportunity, sir, and I'll open it up for public input here. I am going to mention briefly before you start, though, a lot of times when we talk about these zoning issues, and understandably so, it's close to home, so emotions can get kind of high. We understand that, and we absolutely accept it, and encourage you to say whatever you need to say. The one request that I would have for anybody who wants to speak on this item, though, is that we try to keep it civil as we talk about it. It's okay to talk about the reasons why you're for or against it, but what I would ask you to hold off on is attacking any one person or any one group individually. That just does not help your argument, for starters, and we'd rather try to keep it civil here if we can. So those are my requests as we get started, but I will let you begin. All we need from you first is your name and address, please.
My name is Mike Joseph Howitz. I live at 2735 Hickory Hill, and I rise to voice my objection and concerns regarding this proposal. As you can see, there already is a large number of residents in that area, and we're going to put in there 40 more, 60 more units with a possibility of a whole lot more people. There are 60 cars being provided for these 40 units. People today have more than one car per family. If you have a teenager, you're going to have three, maybe four cars per family. There aren't anywhere near enough parking spaces for those cars. We are concerned that those cars will be on the street. We already have an issue with that in another area. I won't mention it because we shouldn't do that, but putting that many more cars into the area will be a problem. Mazatelli and Guadalupe and Waller are wonderful schools, and I'm glad they're there. We appreciate that, and we love to have the kids there. We understand that with the new tax refunds that are bonuses that they are getting, they intend to enlarge, that those schools could become bigger, and they're planning for additions. Now, there are times when you can't get out of our street because they line up and they park right in the road waiting for the stop sign at Carter Road so they can turn. We on Hickory Hill cannot get off the street, and they just block us. Same thing trying to get in. When we're trying to go home, trying to turn in there. Once in a while, you'll find a very courteous driver who will stop ahead of the street and motion us to move ahead. We are not the only ones that experience this. There are people on Westmore who have that same issue. There are people on Kane Court who have that issue. There are people up on Arabian that have that. We did not canvass the people just south of us, or just north of us, down the hill. There's another cul-de-sac down there, a double cul-de-sac down there. All of these cul-de-sacs going into this one little funnel is a big issue, and we are concerned. We would accept a smaller project there, one that'd have fewer, but 60 units? There's more units in that than there is in our whole cul-de-sac. And if you can imagine that, cramming that density in such a small little area, all funneling into Carter Road and Kane. Traffic from Kane has no place to go except Carter Road. And then there's that stop. We're going to put a stoplight there? There's an issue. We are also concerned about the water. We live in the B-branch feed, and just below our residence, oh, about 500 feet, there is a retaining dam, which is to keep the water from going into the B-branch too quickly. We, that's a beautiful thing we have, the B-branch project. It took years, lots of money, lots of work to get that the way it is. It got that way because zoning didn't work. People put houses where they weren't supposed to put them. Now, we're going to be putting an apartment complex in a place it shouldn't be. So we do object to that for those reasons. When I taught at Waller many, many years ago, the kids came to school basically by interstate-powered bus. Today, they drive their own car, many, many of them. There are still kids who come by bus, I presume, but not very many. It was almost a whole, we had, what, 1,900 students, something like that? And many of them came by interstate-powered bus. Today, we don't have that privilege. And Waller will be getting bigger. I'm glad they are. Mazatelli will be getting bigger. I'm glad it is, and so will Guadalupe. But that is going to add to our existing problem. I urge you to vote this down in favor of a smaller project, which we would support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike, for your comments. Do we have any other public input on this item? Come on up, just name and address, please, to begin.
My name's Dan Williams. I'm at 2710 Hickory Hill. I'm right there on the corner as you go up and take a left. I heard of this probably about three weeks ago, and the city of Dubuque has a lot of empty apartment buildings, a lot. And here we are going to build more. You look down by the post right across the street, you got a gentleman over there that's got apartment buildings, empty. And here, we want to build more. I agree that we can develop that, but we got kids that run track up our street on Hickory Hill. They practice right there. They practice up and down. And adding more vehicles to that, where are they going to, you know, it's feasible to put that many apartment buildings in that small spot. My opinion is, if it's approved today, I will put my house up for sale tomorrow. I saved all my life to get the house where I'm at, the area I'm at, and putting up a building where I look out my back and also see this apartment building. I don't want that. And it's sad that our town has all these empty apartments, and now they want to build more. I counted six just on one street on the way down here, and they're nice apartment buildings. It's hard, it is, to support, you know, for what we want to grow. We got housing going out by the airport. We're supposed to have apartment buildings going out by Buffalo Wild Wings, I heard, behind the AMC, I think it is, but I don't know what came of that. Building new is not going to help the streets and the cities of Dubuque when they've got so many rundown apartment buildings that could be fixed and redone, and just as nice as where they're wanting to build. Like I said, if it's approved, I'll sell. I have no problem selling, but I like the neighborhood I'm in. Took me six years to find that neighborhood. Took me seven years to find total to get a place to rent in Dubuque when I moved back. It's unfeasible to build that big of an apartment complex up the street where our kids run and practice a sport that they feel safe of doing. And you will have to put a stoplight there. There should be, there should be two, one up at the four-way and one down there. It's crazy, like the gentleman just said. We can't get in our houses' streets with the schools. They are driving themselves, and they are, they are expanding up there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Paula Lang, and I live at 3077 Westmore Drive. I have actually been probably the second oldest one left on that street after people have moved and come and gone. I, every morning, witness the traffic. I take a young man who is eight years old because the parents does not want him to stand on the corner by himself and wait for the school bus. So I'm willing to take him to the corner every day, and I sit there, and the traffic is horrendous. Not only are they coming to go to Mazatelli and Waller, they're coming back that same way because it's the only thing. If you build this complex with 40 additional apartments and have that exit coming out towards Westmore, that is going to drive us crazy because right now, when you come down from Kaufman onto Carter, if it's icy, your car is sliding, and if it's snowing, it's very, very dangerous. Then when the cars are coming off of Kane Street and going back up, if it's really icy, they're skidding their tires, and I just hold my breath as they drive up there. The sign says 25 miles per hour. I can tell you that there's not one car that is going 25 or even slowing down. I remember a couple of years ago, you guys voted against a complex that was supposed to go in at Carter and 32nd Street. It was supposed to be a sports complex. There's this farmland that's supposed to be for sale. You voted that down because you said of the heavy traffic that would be on 32nd coming up Carter. Well, I can tell you this, is that a lot of the cars that are coming up Carter, because I can sit and watch them, they're not turning up to go up to Waller. They're still coming up to come up to that stop sign, too. So I fear for our children in the neighborhood, and I'm old. I don't have any more children. My child is 52 years old, and they're gone, but I worry about the little kids that live in our neighborhood. And our neighborhood has changed so much, and we are so pleased to have the young kids there. But it's going to be dangerous if we continue to build a four. Like that other gentleman said, we didn't have a problem when they built those beautiful ones that are across from Waller, those condominiums and that. That is absolutely gorgeous. If they could build something like that, I don't think we'd have a concern because you wouldn't have as many cars. But a 40-unit is going to create a lot more traffic in that area and provide safety for our kids. We just need to watch out for the young. And like I said, I don't have any young ones. My grandkids just don't live here, but I worry about the other kids in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula, for your comments. And I should have mentioned, I'm sorry, you can move that podium down. There's a little button right there by your waist. I know, the computer makes it so hard, and then we can't see your face, and it's really awkward.
So I'll break it in the process.
Yeah, Wally's got you there. Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, Paula, I should have mentioned that to you, too. My apologies on that.
Thanks, I appreciate that, because I thought, man, this is going to be awkward. So I came a little less prepared than some, but my name's Paige Toma, and I live at 3023 Westmore Drive, which is actually the corner lot that will be directly across from where the access point is for this new unit. And like Paula said, she is one of the older ones in the neighborhood, and I'm probably one of the most relatively new within the last six years. My husband and I could have bought a nicer home, more expensive, more updated, bigger, but we bought that home because of the neighborhood that it provided for my kids. That lovely lady in the back, and my son, who I put in the hallway because he would never be able to sit through a meeting like this without his loud tablet. But them, plus about 12 other kiddos that run through our neighborhoods on bikes and on backyards and jumping on trampolines, and the idea of having 40 additional units across the street of rental properties, it's terrifying as a mother. Aside from all the things that everyone else has listed, I think of the, you don't have as much pride in your home when you're a renter in a big unit, stereotypically, as you do as a homeowner. Because as a homeowner, you are responsible for all those upkeeps, all those updates, the safety of your surroundings. It's not as easy just to cut your lease and take off. Those are the things that I think about is many, many children running around that neighborhood with a lot of additional units. There were some other things, I'm sorry, my phone shut off. When the gentleman from the city was kind of explaining some of the things that they had calculated based off of their reports, at one point, we had talked about not creating any additional issues for safety in the trip. There's one way in, one way out, and that the fire department, and that was all cleared. We also live next to St. Mary's, which would be on the backside of that. I can tell you that daily, there are fire trucks or ambulance or police cars, lights and sirens to St. Mary's. That creates a lot of traffic flow, unanticipated stops of traffic. With only one exit and entryway, that's dangerous. For that many units, that should not be safe. That is not safe. That creates an issue, again, safety for my children and the kids that I am responsible Echoing Paula, the speed limit is 25, but there's an actual officer that used to sit daily, was a female police officer, who spent a lot of her time on duty patrolling across the street from the Sisters of the Presentation a little farther up on Carter, because cars don't go the speed they're supposed to. There's a lot of high school drivers, a lot of kids with school permits and not real license, Some of them are 15-year-olds or 14-year-olds driving to school. The house that is directly across from me, they are at 3066 West Moore. They are the corner house. But on the other side, recently had a driver physically hit their basement and caused damage to their home that that driver was driving so fast. I know that that was probably an unanticipated and maybe a one-time deal, but the idea that had their child been outside, she'd be dead. The high traffic, high volume, that's very, very dangerous for our kiddos. With the school vouchers happening, whether people want that or not, we don't know the outcome of what that will look like. Whether they're bused, whether they're not, it will create more traffic, no matter how they're getting there, because the real facts are, is the people using that voucher system don't live within two blocks of Waller. Whether they're added or current, that will create more traffic. We have to physically plan leaving and entering our homes based on school dismissal times already, and I am just unsure how one singular entry and exit point would not create a traffic flow. And with all due respect to the calculations made by the city, we've just recently heard, Mr. Jones, you say about the Starbucks barricades, like, that was probably calculated, that that was not going to be an issue also, or the city probably wouldn't have approved it. And we can see that sometimes calculations just don't work out as they're intended. I don't believe that those calculations will be correct. I think it will be disastrous, and I think people will get hurt. Another example is, right in front of my home, there's no parking sign. So we can't even park in front of my home for the first, I'm not even going to guess, I'm awful with math, that's why I work with people. Because when you come down the hill and take a left onto West Moore Drive, in the wintertime, it's slippery, it's dangerous. They don't allow us to park there because if my car slides, they don't want me hitting the parked cars there. So when I have guests and I have company, I can't even have my own mother or grandmother park in front of my home. They have to park down the street. I don't know how in the winter we're going to do that, as the city can't keep up with calls as it is. There's a natural spring that runs through West Moore Drive, and if you would have checked two days prior to today before it got warm, there was ice covering our entire street. The salt trucks are there at 5:00 a.m. several days a week, trying to grind it up, but there's already safety hazards in that area, and I'm very concerned for the safety of not only our kiddos, but other drivers. There's runners from Waller that actually use that side of the street as a safe path. They cross up by Waller School, they come down the hill, run up that side of the street, and they can cross at the four-way by the Sisters of the Presentation there. Creating the only entry and exit point creates a hazard for the Waller students and Mazza Kelly students running as well. Again, I chose my home based on the neighborhood I was putting them in, not the actual house itself, and would just be very disappointing to know that where we've made a choice to land our family of six years, that could all be uprooted, because my house will be directly affected by the access and entry points to this unit. I would strongly encourage you guys to not approve this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige, for your comments. Anyone else? Do we have any virtual comments this evening?
No virtual comments.
Okay.
And no input received.
Okay. Oh, I see one more. Come on up.
Good evening. Kevin Oberbreckling, CK Construction, CK Development Group, the person looking at developing the complex here. I understand everybody's valid points in the neighborhood. We grew up in a similar neighborhood years ago on Jeffrey Drive, back when on the other side of Carter Road was all pond and JFK didn't exist and stuff like that. So I understand development concerns. This chunk of land has been in the city limits, obviously, for a long time. There's been different planned communities. As they talked earlier, while they did about, I think it was proposed 60-plus units on this, where I'm only proposing 40 units. And as I'm looking around, and I see what they're saying, they've got all the different cul-de-sacs, but cul-de-sacs are creating some of the issue at hand already. Mine is no different with one access. You've got 29 or so on one, another 21 on another cul-de-sac, 29 on another, 13 on another. You've got 80-plus with one access on the condos. We're looking at 40-plus units, you know? So the density and all that's kind of relevant to that, and I understand concerns. However, the demographics, too, we're looking at building the two-bedroom and three-bedroom. With the economy and the interest rate going up, these people can afford the same homes in that area, that would be the magnitude of the renters, you know, as fair market value for a two-bedroom, three-bedroom. So we don't want to deprive them neither of sending their kids to good schools and stuff, so I'm looking to have good tenants and stuff. So any one of the tenants at $1,400 or $1,500 a month can afford that average median house in that same area. So I think Wally addressed most of the concerns, the traffic logistics. I think that, you know, we, as CK Construction, we have our own in-house construction company. We gainfully employ six full-time people in the carpentry business year-round on overtime. Got a secretary in-house, and then myself, my son works for me, and my wife, which, so it'll be a family operation with other rental properties in Dubuque as well. So I feel that there is a need. I know that there's waiting lists in Piazz and other surrounding areas for apartments. They can't build them fast enough. I think that in Dubuque and surrounding areas, especially in Dubuque, that some vacancies, maybe they're vacant for a reason, but I still feel that the need is there, however. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, any others, before I bring it back to the table for the council only to discuss this item? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for your comments. I will bring it back to the table now for any questions or discussion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start it off.
Start it.
Okay. A comment was made, and thank you, by the way, everyone who is here, and then all of the residents who signed the petition. I think it's very important to share with us your interests and your concerns, and it is very much greatly appreciated to hear from you. I do have a comment about apartment living and the quality of that life experiences. And up until the time I relocated back to Dubuque in 2008, I had lived in apartments for over 20 years and had been in various cities, living in apartments and creating really fun friendships, long-lasting friendships and communities, just like you would in your own neighborhoods of single-family homes, only you happen to be in a building where you have maybe multiple floors and multiple people living. So I just wanted to say that I am a proponent of apartments, and for those people first starting off, for those people that are relocating for business purposes and have temporary housing for a couple of years, apartment living is just really a very sound and good option for many, many people. So I wanted just to kind of share with you my experience so that you understand that apartment living is really a nice alternative for some folks who don't necessarily have that option to purchase a home, or maybe not at that timeframe in their career, in their family positions, or where they are in their family style, to do that. So, but I just wanted to make that point, and also that I think it's an interesting opportunity that we are, that infill opportunity is there for the city, and we do and are in need of housing. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Self first, then I'll come to you, Mr. Resnick.
Okay. I know that we are in need of more housing, and perhaps maybe a little bit later, Mr. Van Milligan can talk a little bit about that. One gentleman mentioned that there's lots of housing available, and I'm not sure that that's true. One statistic was that we were about 1,100 units short, so maybe later we could address that. And I know that this particular property has been a PUD for a while, and the odds are that it's not going to remain vacant, and something's going to go here eventually. But I think it's really important that we address the concerns that we're hearing from our residents, and Wally has talked about a lot of them. And, Wally, I wondered if you could reiterate for me. I've had some calls from residents in this area about stormwater, and I thought you mentioned a detention area that was required, and something about the site plan will require a stormwater plan. Could you reiterate that a little bit for me?
Yeah, sure. So this site will require a site plan to be submitted to our development review team. The development review team is composed of the planning, fire, building, water, and engineering departments. And when we look at sites that are greater than an acre, there's a requirement for stormwater management from those sites. So with a development like this, there'll be a requirement for a detention area. And what a detention area is, it's going to capture how the stormwater runs off the site. Some might sheet-flow off to certain areas, but the majority will be directed towards the detention area, and it would be captured there and released at the same flow rate that was leaving the site. There is opportunities to tie that detention facility into the existing storm sewer system. Currently, right now, if you go out to the site, you can see it's a hillside, and that water kind of just sheet-flows off the hillside and goes over the sidewalk and into Carter Road. And then, as you can see, everything kind of funnels into that point to the north where that apartment complex is located for that. And as part of that site plan review process, there'll be stormwater calculations that are required by the engineering department. Those calculations are provided to our engineering department. They review them to make sure that they're meeting those minimum requirements. In addition to that, we require a stormwater pollution prevention plan, how we manage the silt and stormwater during construction from the site. They are required to get an erosion settlement control permit, and some are other factors that come involved with the site plan review processes, we manage those. And then those facilities then are inspected regularly by the engineering department, and we actually have a cooperative that we work with, a county, and some of that review process for that, for stormwater management, to make sure those facilities are being maintained and up to current code, to be able to manage the stormwater from the site. They're also required to provide two stormwater management tools, which is something that I don't talk a lot about. When we have opportunities for these sites, not only are they looking at doing detention, we also look at, is there opportunities to put in native plantings to capture more of the stormwater off the site? Is there opportunities to put in infiltration, permeable pavers, bio-retention cells? There's all these different opportunities that are open to them. Currently, right now, the site is just mowed lawn, if you go out there and look at it, which is not the best opportunity for infiltration, to be honest with you. And then the parking lot in the design has the ability to capture and direct flows through the area, obviously downspouts on the apartment complexes and the garages to help direct that. So that'll all be managed through the site plan review process. Sometimes people actually find out that the stormwater actually is improved, because now we have the ability to capture it, channel it, manage it from the site, where currently, right now, it's just a large hillside that's just mowed grass.
Thank you, that's very helpful. So for my other current question, Mr. Van Milligan, I wondered if maybe you could address the perception that we don't need housing? Could you address that a bit?
Sure, thank you. I'm going to actually ask Wally to address that question. He has all the facts.
Yeah, definitely. So I work hand-in-hand with Alexis Steger in the Housing Community Development Department, and Jill Connor's our Economic Development Director. We've been working with the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and they've done a housing needs study. We also work with the Iowa Finance Authority that does a housing needs assessment for our entire community. There's actually been two studies that have been conducted, and both have identified that we are in need of having about 1,100 units by the end of 2030 to be able to capture our population growth in our community. We have seen a lot of apartments being requested to come before us. The one gentleman did mention, the one development, Fox Hills Apartment, that's being proposed out of Plaza Drive. But we are in need of these structures. A lot of those housing studies that we've heard from developers are saying, you know, as we build these, they're leasing up right away. There has been discussions with regards to, well, I see that there's a lot of apartments that are available. I don't have that information before us, but we do know that we have a very low vacancy rate. But not only that, we also meet with a housing advocacy group that talks about the quality of some of those units. There may be units that are vacant due to, you know, the style, the quality of it, but with these developments, obviously, it's new construction, and as what you heard from Mr. Oberbreckling, he's actually talking about two- and three-bedroom units, which is a need that we need in our community. What you were seeing a lot of is the one-bedroom, the two-bedroom. What about the two- and three-bedroom opportunities for those families, as opposed to, say, for instance, a younger couple or a retired couple, or someone wants to move in with a roommate? So this is actually expanding an opportunity to provide another housing choice in our community. And also, with the close proximity to the school and the walkability of the neighborhood, you know, I actually used to live down on Kaufman Avenue, not very far from this. We did walk-through. My kids went to Eisenhower School. We went up to Waller and Veterans Park for the playground. They got the beautiful Miracle League Park up there. So one of the things that we do talk about is recreational space. What's the opportunity for that? There are benefits to higher-density development. When we concentrate a lot of people, it's easier for us to provide services. We're not running water and sewer quite a distance, a service, a smaller amount of individuals. But not only do that, you talked about the community benefits of, you're going to run into your neighbor in a hallway, as opposed to maybe a larger, lower-density, single-family development. You have to get along, right, sometimes, right? But then also, we talk about the opportunities to have that space more available for recreational space, then. So as you see, some of our, we're going to go through our Dubuque Parks and Master Plan here with the Leasur Services Department. But we have this great facility along the Waller campus and the Veterans Memorial and the Miracle League of Dubuque, to be able to provide those recreational opportunities, not to mention the existing school facilities that are located in the area. So I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So, Wally, is this, most of our PUDs of these housing developments, do they require green space and play areas?
Yeah, they do require green space, open space. They're required to have a minimum of 20% of the site in green space. This will actually exceed that requirement. There is not a requirement for recreational space unless it's a major subdivision, and then we get into the percentage of recreational space in relationship to the number of units for the development, so.
You mentioned it's hilly, and it's green space right now. And you say that we can improve that drainage on green space. I mean, it's better, it's going to be better than open land.
Yeah, currently, because we have the ability to review and control how the stormwater flows off the site, how we capture that, and where we direct that to, through the facility. So we have situations where, opportunities where, you know, you talk about springs located in the areas for tiling and how to direct stormwater through that. So all that will be managed and reviewed through the engineering department through those stormwater reports.
So, and if that doesn't work, who is responsible for the damages of water onto neighbors or in their basements?
Sure. So we would take it through our engineering department, they would review it. We would, any complaint that gets in regards to that would be directed to the city, and then we would take it through enforcement procedures and work with our engineering department, and then also the relationship that we have with the county for reviewing detentions and stormwater management.
So then who is responsible for the actual monetary value that occurs? I'm just curious.
If there's damage from it, it would be the property owner that's associated with it.
And it said in your report that Mr. Oberbreckling, we're, thank you very much for coming tonight, acknowledged concerns expressed by the neighbors. I don't know what that means, he acknowledged. Does that mean that the plan is being adjusted to address those concerns, or what does that mean?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
It says, Mr. Oberbreckling acknowledged concerns expressed by the neighbors.
In the minutes of the meetings, what you're talking about?
Well, in the material we got tonight.
The cover letter from that, okay. I think that's probably addressing some of the comments that were brought up with regards to housing type, how's parking going to work and everything associated with the site for that. Addressing concerns probably is a better terminology instead of acknowledging the concerns. But at that meeting, and I do have Rich Russell, our vice chairperson from the Zoning Advisory Commission, that was present, a lot of the discussion at the Zoning Advisory Commission meeting centered around traffic, density, heights of the building, screening, stormwater management, a lot of things that we're discussing before you tonight. So at the meeting, Mr. Oberbreckling gives an opportunity to give a presentation, the neighbors then have an opportunity to speak, and then Mr. Oberbreckling has an opportunity to rebut those comments. That's a rebuttal of some of the issues that were brought up, or concerns that are expressed by the neighbors with regards to that. And then, from that standpoint, then we take it through the staff report discussion.
So the detention ponds that's set to the site plan, it's going to be brought up, are the neighbors going to be notified that there is a site plan that's up? And do we do this notification again?
So, no. So through the rezoning process, that's the only thing we notify for. The site plan would just go through the development review team process. For that, we review the layout. The one thing about a conceptual development plan, if I may add, for a planning and development, this is a lot more intense than what we talk about normally for a straight rezoning. If we were looking at this property, we rezoned to R4 multifamily residential, which if it was, we could actually have more units on which if it was, we could actually have more units on here than the proposed 40 units and actually built closer to the property lines. This actually is a plan that sets in tone that this is where the buildings are going to be located, this is the heights of the buildings, this is where the parking lot's going to be associated. So there is some knowledge, knowing how the site layout's actually going to work at this time. And it's been taken through the development review team already, because we have to make sure we're not approving a conceptual development plan that doesn't meet code requirements. So that's, there's a certain level of assurance that that's already gone through the process, and it's meeting those code requirements. So those, when I address the fire department, the engineering department, stormwater, that's because I'm following up with actually what's been happening through that review process.
In your presentation, you mentioned that a study, a traffic study is not needed, and somebody determined that? Who was determined?
No, the engineering department looks at the land use of the property based on the number of units. Actually, to be honest with you, a single-family home generates a little over 10 vehicle trips per day. An apartment complex can generate anywhere between 6 and 8. So our engineering department actually has a traffic engineer that's actually on staff. They work with Gus LaHoyes, the city engineer. They're part of our development review team process. And based on the land use and the number of units on the site, it doesn't warrant to that level of a traffic study that should be conducted for that.
Do you think that 1 and 1/2 cars per apartment is still an appropriate number?
Based on our current Unified Development Code and the previous code that we had before that, and my knowledge of working 22 years for the city, 1 and 1/2 parking spaces is adequate for the development. It also depends on, and I always, I kind of go through this, the history of people who live in an apartment or a home. So imagine a couple comes in here, they may have one car, they may have two cars, they have children, they may get up to driving age. So, I mean, it really depends on the need and the demand based on the number of units. Now, three bedroom unit, you could have additional requirement, or additional parking for two, maybe. But as the ebb and flow and the parking and the nature of it, that's typically what we see. All those calculations are kind of put together as part of our American Planning Association parking calculations, and that's what they've arrived at for the 1 and 1/2 parking spots.
Will there be street parking allowed?
So I want to address that comment, though, is talk about how some on-street parking isn't allowed. If you look at Westmore Street here and Carter Road, and I know I have Gus LaHoyes here, but a lot of times, parking is not allowed in certain areas due to visibility and access. So if you look at the roadway configuration here, it's not a nice little 90-degree angle. So sometimes parking is eliminated to be able to see visibility up and down the street. But if parking's available on the street, then yes, it would be allowed. This is also an emergency snow route, so there are requirements to have vehicles removed on and off the property. So.
That question will be answered when we get to plan?
So on-street parking currently right now, I believe is only allowed on the one side of the street, which is, would be the side of the apartment complex side.
So there is parking allowed there right now?
I believe. Gus, do you know? Or, no, it's not allowed?
No parking allowed on the street. So if there is overflow parking, then it most likely would probably go to Westmore or to Kane Street.
Oh, great. All right. And final question, Mr. Mayor. And this is a question for Mr. Russell. If you wouldn't mind talking about, how many people should be on our planning, I mean, our zoning advisory commission? We only had three votes on this very important vote. And right now, you have four. And I've seen six, I think, before. Is it even seven?
We do have, the city code allows for seven members. We had three excused absences. And the fourth member had a conflict of interest due to being the engineer that's going to prepare the site plan. So he had to recuse himself.
Were there any red flags in all this that, I mean, I, again, I didn't watch the meeting. It just seems that there's a lot in here. Were there red flags to you or anybody else? Thank you.
I think there was, there was some concern about the density, but with, if you look around the neighborhood on the east side of Carter Road, there's, it's pretty much all multifamily in, in some fashion. And we didn't talk about the, the senior living complex further east on Kaufman. Yeah, or is it, yeah, Kaufman, or the Sisters Property. It, you know, that side of the street's all multifamily, south of Kane Street.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
There was a question asked by Councilmember Resnick about liability for flooding, and Wally gave a response to that of the property owner. And I have to admit, I don't feel comfortable with that unless the city attorney does. We have no way of determining liability because we don't know all the circumstances. We're going to work with the developer to review their plans and make sure that they provide stormwater detention, but I would feel uncomfortable saying we know who's going to be liable for something if something happens.
So our role would be limited to enforcement of our regulations and compliance or non-compliance with the regulations. Related to who would be responsible, we would refer people to their private legal counsel and inform them that they should deal with their insurer and legal counsel to determine legal liability for that, because that would be a private legal matter between the parties.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I comment on that very quickly?
Sure.
And what I was concerned about is that Mr. Wernamont mentioned the minimum requirements. He wants to make sure that they enforce the minimum requirements. I just, that just sounds like it's just enough. And is there gradations, like minimum, very healthy, maximum? I mean, are there gradations? Because the minimum requirements, that phrase just kind of was a red flag to me. Thank you.
Other side of the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
The school traffic problem is a problem, but I think there are about 24 public and private schools in the city of Dubuque, and each one of them generates a traffic backup twice a day that thankfully only lasts about 15 or 20 minutes. But it's there at every one of them. I've driven quite a few of them. I recently retired from driving a yellow school bus. One of the locations I went to was Waller. You're right, you can't get in there. You sit in the street waiting to turn in because people are illegally parking and standing in the traffic lanes trying to get into that parking lot. And if they expand, I guess we're going to have to look at the traffic pattern there, because what's there is not adequate. But this isn't about rezoning Waller High School. That's a traffic issue in the area, but it's not immediately adjacent to this area. It is true that we keep hearing from employers that they make offers to people to come and, and accept employment in Dubuque, and they discover that they can't find a place to live that's adequate for their needs. And so they turn down the employment. We hear that story time and time and time again. And there are some empty apartments in this city, but as, I think it was the developer that said, there's a reason for them. They're not in good shape. They're not appealing. And I believe, I won't live across the street from here at the place he cited. It needs a lot of work. It needs, anyhow. I won't live every place, but I'd live here. 40 units is not huge. 40 units is, it's another cul-de-sac emptying onto an arterial. That's going to be similar volume to all of the other cul-de-sacs that enter onto that arterial. I'm not, I'm not very compelled that the traffic's going to be an issue. Doing the math, that's about an 8% increase. It's not 100% increase or 200% increase. It's about an 8% increase in traffic on an arterial street that can absolutely handle another 8%. Whether additional traffic controls are needed in the neighborhood, I guess time will tell, but it doesn't appear to me, and that's supported by the opinions of our professional traffic engineers, that that's needed at this time. So what we really have here is a development that we need that's less intense than could be built there with existing zoning. That if we adopt the PUD, makes it more difficult to change than with existing zoning. That assures the neighborhood that it's going to be as representative, as represented when it's built, assures the council that things aren't going to change. So that's kind of an upgrade. Lastly, stormwater. Right now, it just runs down the hill the way, I guess, nature intended. It runs across the sidewalk, ice is the sidewalk, ice is a portion of the street, and finds its way into storm sewers. In the development plan, an engineered system to collect and manage that stormwater will occur. That's not there now. So the expectation should be that it's less runoff onto the street, less, no runoff onto the sidewalks, and an improved stormwater situation. So that's, that's the reasonable expectation when we do an engineered solution to that as, as the property's developed. So you've got setbacks that are farther than the current zoning would require. You've got capacity that is lesser than the current zoning that would allow. You've got a more stringent set of regulations. And I hope you don't sell your house till you see this thing and see if it really impacts you. This, this isn't a conversation. I'm just saying, I hope you don't sell your house.
I'm going to, I'm going to keep it with Mr. Jones, please. We've already had time for public, no, no, we've already had time for public input. So, no, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask you to stop, please. I'm going to ask you to. The discussion is up here at the table now. We appreciate your input earlier, and we appreciate everyone's. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Nobody likes to have their neighborhood changed, but this change was inevitable. This property's been there. It's been zoned for at least four different projects that we're aware of that, for whatever reason, didn't occur. And we've got a pretty reasonable development. It's an infill development. That's good for the city. That means no expansion of services, no expensive infrastructure additions. It's well-served by all of the infrastructure that we have. And it doesn't look to me like it's harmful. It's going to be different. Different and harmful are two very opposite things. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wethel.
I want to begin by saying thank you to all of the neighbors that have come tonight for being here, but also for being welcoming. My children have been on that campus for the last five years, and now I have three of them there. And I'm very grateful for how a neighborhood welcomes children into a school, because it isn't easy. As Mr. Jones says, there is traffic at every school, and it is overwhelming depending on the time of the day. And I promise you, I have been in those car lines, and I have been a little overwhelmed myself at times. The safety concerns that I have, I'm not sure if, Mr. Wernamont, I could ask you, I don't recall the sidewalk situation on the side of Kane across from the school buildings. I don't know that the sidewalk is a contiguous sidewalk all the way along Kane, starting at Carter. I feel like on the other side of the street, there is sidewalk, but maybe there's not sidewalk. For me, that's one concern I have, and I don't know zoning-wise or community-wise, if that's something that we need to look at as the, potentially, the traffic from a new development would walk over to that school space to make sure we have, also create safe pedestrian spaces for folks to walk across Kane there. Just some feedback on that, if I could?
I'm sure. And without having to air a photo and double-check, I'm not sure if there's sidewalks that go the full length along Kane Street. But we do look at walkability to our school districts and our park areas. So tonight, you just heard a discussion about a bike and hike pedestrian plan during a work session. We also are looking at putting sidewalks on JFK. Remember those conversations? We've had quite a few discussions about that. As we look at this development, there is an existing sidewalk. For off-site improvements, for areas that don't have sidewalk, those are evaluated through the engineering department. It could be a requirement to have additional sidewalks put in there. And we have requests that come before us to, you know, request not putting sidewalks in. You know, that's part of a complete street discussion that we have. And we have a lot of discussions, like, I don't want to put the sidewalk in because no one else has a sidewalk. We've got to start somewhere. As this area is developed and we evaluate, we can take a look at if there's full connectivity through the sidewalks throughout the neighborhood. I believe there is on both sides of the street. I know the one question you might be having is the pineal subdivision where there's the retaining wall area.
Yeah.
I don't have it here. I know there are some residents here that might be able to answer that question. I know the connectivity through there, and like I said, I used to live in the neighborhood, so I walked around a little bit, but never down this section of the street. So I don't know if Gus, Gus knows, or?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just looking at, at the aerials and GIS, and there are sidewalks on both sides of Kane and Carter. Carter sidewalks cease north of Kaufman.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much, Mr. Wernamont.
Sure.
The other thing I want to address is something that Councilwoman Farber talked about, and that is the pride in renting. A rich community is built from folks of all stages in life. One of the proudest moments I had as an adult was my first apartment with my husband at a college. And I promise you, I treated that place like gold. And so to make an assumption that people that occupy rented housing are not going to treat it with respect to me is not a place I'm willing to go, because I've been in that space. We're good people in Dubuque. We're welcoming. As I said, you welcomed my own family into your community through the school system there. And so I really want people to understand that we are creating solid rental housing from solid construction. And that's the way I want our community to grow so that everyone has a place to live. Not just people that can afford a down payment. There's a lot of folks that can't, and they live in rental housing. And so I absolutely respect your concerns. I have to tell you, though, that I respect the folks that need a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Yeah, Mr. Sprang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I live on a busy street myself. I'm used, traffic is always a concern of mine. I live across from a fairly well-busy park. And what I gather out of most of this is, we clearly have a traffic issue. We clearly have folks that don't feel like obeying our speed limits. So regardless of how this decision goes, we probably should look at that some more, which we, which we kind of are. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We've all had an adequate opportunity here to, to say our piece, I think, and ask some very important questions. I sincerely appreciated people being able to come and share their thoughts with us. We also had a lot of input here in, in this particular item, so we had a lot of public input. We did see the petition. We, we heard from, obviously with the PUD, we didn't hear from people directly until, until now, but as, reading through all this, I feel, I feel very informed, honestly, especially after this discussion tonight, to be able to think about what we need to think about and move forward with this. I'll cut straight to the bottom line, because I could just rehash what everybody said here, but everybody made some really good points. So for me, straight to the bottom line is, I don't see a problem in particular with this development. I will agree with Mr. Sprang's point. I am concerned about the traffic at certain times of day, and I think in some places, we have a little easier time with school traffic than we do in others. And maybe that is something we could potentially take a look at if, you know, we have seen growth in that particular campus. It is a great anchor to the neighborhood, as Ms. Wethel pointed out. But I do think with traffic coming in, I'm looking at the maps now, you know, it does seem like there, there could be some ways to manage that better. But I don't see how this particular apartment complex is going to impact that in any way that is going to be detrimental, based on what we're hearing from the, the study that we're seeing, or from the, all the information that we're seeing. I am concerned about the speeding problems. That's very interesting, considering the discussion we've been having recently about speeding and other ways to manage that. This, this particular spot sounds like it could be pretty problematic, and it's something that's definitely on my radar now as we move through those discussions. But the bottom line is, you know, I sincerely appreciate when we have opportunities to be able to talk about this in this way, not just here, but then also all the information that we gather. I, I live in a neighborhood surrounded by renters and surrounded by, renters in larger and smaller complexes. And they're wonderful, wonderful neighbors. And I've seen a lot of neighborhoods like that in the city of Dubuque. And I think it's important that we do, as Ms. Wethel said, and be able to welcome multiple, welcome everyone who wants to live in Dubuque and be a Dubuqueer, no matter what walk of life they find themselves in. I think that's really important, that we do that. One of the challenges in this particular neighborhood is that we have a lot of attention and development in this neighborhood right now. If I'm thinking about all the development that we've had, a lot of it's been discussed in this particular area of town. It hasn't changed for a very long time, and I know that. I had family members who've lived in that area for a long time and have spent a lot of time in those neighborhoods. It hasn't changed, and now it is, and that's challenging. But as it does, I, I have faith in our planning department, I have faith in our engineering department to do this well. And what I would hope is that if you do have challenges with property And what I would hope is that if you do have challenges with property, with neighbors, with any challenges that you have, that you first reach out to each other and discuss that and try to find ways to make, make it better, but then also call the city. I mean, call the city Dubuque. We have services for that reason. So I plan to vote for this. I do think that it's a good addition to the neighborhood. Everything that I've heard tonight shows me that I think it's the, the right way to go, so that will, that will be my vote, and thank you to everyone for a very thorough discussion here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, Mr. Resnick.
I, I try to separate my questioning from my reason why I'm gonna vote, so, because I like to think about the answers that I get here. So if you wouldn't mind, 30 seconds. I appreciate all the great answers and information. I really do think that the city of Dubuque's housing needs should be a separate issue rather about, instead of talking about this, you know, it's a, it's not a good, it's not a good reason to make a bad zoning decision. I'm gonna vote, I am gonna support this tonight because of the information I got. Then Mr. Wernamont said, we're gonna bring back this plan. We're gonna have a lot more going on with this. The information that I've gotten has all said that we should accept this plan. I have to say, I've lived in six places in Dubuque while we're here, and a couple of times I've left because of the renter neighbors. So there are other experiences. I'm glad you've all had great experiences with renters, and I hope that they, this neighborhood does too, but it's not the only experience to be had. So I intend to support this tonight and look forward to further developments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Okay. Then we do have a motion by Jones and a second by Farber to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move, uh, final, final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
I got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at seven zero.
Public hearing number three is amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2023.1.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
And a second by Sprank. Uh, mic, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the resolution for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.1. To propose amended and restated urban renewal plan for the district would remove property from subarea E of the district. The proposed plan would also include a new project under the public purpose activities, Geiser Brother, Geisler Brothers Realty LLC and Dubuque Steel Products Incorporated. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution for the amendment and, I'm sorry, hang on, adopt the resolution for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.1. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none here, do we have any virtual input?
No virtual.
No input received.
Thank you. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none. We have a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at seven zero.
Public hearing number four is amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2023.2.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion by Farber and a second by Resnick. Mic, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the resolution for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.2. To propose amended and restated urban renewal plan for the district would expand the district to include property to be designated as a new subarea S. Subarea S was previously undeveloped property that was removed from the subarea E by version 2023.1 of this plan. The proposed urban renewal plan will also include a new project under the public purpose activities, Cyple Warehouse LLC. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution for the amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.2. Do we have any input from the public on this item? Seeing none. Any virtual?
No.
Thank you.
Input received.
All right, thank you. Back to the table then for any discussion. Okay. Seeing none. I'll just comment quickly for anybody who's watching that some of this stuff is rather process-oriented, so we are doing some things that we've read a lot about, don't really need to discuss a whole lot based on what we're seeing up here and moving right along with it. So with that said, we have a motion by Farber, a second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at seven zero.
Public hearing number five is request to vacate a portion of certain sanitary sewer easements across a part of Lot 1 of Dubuque Industrial Center 14th Edition in the city of Dubuque. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider vacating a portion of the sanitary sewer easements across a part of Lot 1 of Dubuque Industrial Center 14th Edition in the city of Dubuque. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none. Any virtual?
No.
Thank you.
Input received.
All right. Then we have, back to the table then for any discussion? Questions? Okay. We have a motion by Sprank, a second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Sorry.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes six, um, six zero.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? This would be the opportunity, yeah.
Thank you. My name is Mark Amberg. I live at 315 River Ridge in Dubuque, and I'm a bartender at the Grand River Center. And I recently learned that the contract for management is going to OVG Group, a federal contractor. And I, I recently reapplied for my job this weekend, and I was a bit triggered when I went through the process because on the front page, there is a vaccine statement, which I found rather odd, which said that they may or may not have the right to force vaccines on us. And as I went further into the application, I learned that they are a federal contractor, which I found extremely odd. And I understand with the economy, what we just went through with all the COVID regulations, it has decimated the hospitality industry. And we've gone through three, businesses are going bankrupt because of top-down government policies. And so I find it strange, why does our federal government need a proxy to manage local hospitality services? Doesn't really add up. And actually, it's what it is, it's the textbook definition of fascism. And to me, I find it repugnant that they can bankrupt entire industries and then come in through a surrogate and take over and implement policies that they want done. It, it makes me furious, quite frankly. And my background, I just moved, I'm from Dubuque, I just, I had to move back here because of the very same vaccine mandates from the federal government. And when we started our meeting tonight, we did a pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the republic that we live in. We live in a democratic republic. We don't live in a theocracy. We don't live in a fascist totalitarian state. We live in a republic. So I find it offensive that local management was not hired for this process. These values that we have in Iowa and we have in our local community do not correspond with this webpage on, on this corporation's website. And others, my coworkers, are also triggered by it. They don't want to go through vaccine injuries. They don't want to be forced or coerced into anything like this. And I would say a large percentage of our customer base feels this way as well. And I don't think this corporation deserves to come in here. I don't think they represent our values, and I'm advocating that we wait to sign any contracts because it's too important. Our instant, let me give you my background. I lived in, I, I worked in healthcare for 30 years, and I lived in Iowa City. I worked for the VHA at, at the VA Hospital for 20 years. And I was, I managed the CT department for several years of that. I was also the Vison 23 expert in my field. I had to work with the biggest unions in the country, and I had to know the 32-page scope and practice of the CT technologists. So I have a pretty good understanding of ethics, and I had to leave my career. I had to, I have no healthcare now because I was forced into that very situation. And now I work for $4.35 an hour bartending, and I'm perfectly happy doing that. But I don't want to see a fascist corporation come in here and do the same policies that I had to flee Iowa City from, and that's why I'm here tonight. Now, I have, I would be happy to work with the city manager to make suggestions for improvements, things that need to be addressed. And I, I just want to say, don't sign the contract. It's too important. At minimum, we have to delay it because, here's the thing, our, as I mentioned before, this is not hyperbole. The public trust in our institutions are failing rapidly. We are facing, in an economic condition right now, we are facing higher interest rates and money printing as they deal with the next failed institution, our banking. So it's going to be very hard to rehabilitate our downtown area on a shoestring budget. I, it can be done, but it's going to take someone with business acumen, but we need to find the right fit for our community. And so I think we need to delay this decision. I could, I would be happy to give my input and work with Mr. Milligan on other options, but I do not want to work for a company that has this set of values where they can hide behind this corporate facade. I just, I don't like it. I find it repugnant, and, and it makes my blood boil, and a lot of other people feel the same way. As soon as they log on this webpage, they see, you know, the new normal, and we, it doesn't have to be that way. We can, we can rehabilitate the Grand River Center a different way. I just don't want to see it go to this corporate entity who, who, by the way, the questions that I posed, why is a federal contractor being the agency to oversee this? Doesn't make any sense, and I don't like it. And we don't owe them anything. We don't have to sign the contracts, and I advocate that we don't. And that's about all I have to say tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mark, for your comments. Appreciate you being here. Any other public input this evening? See none here. Do we have any virtual?
No virtual input.
Okay.
And no input received.
Okay. Then we can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is solid waste automated curbside collection system implementation council update.
Got a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Mike, I'm coming to you or going straight to John?
Yeah, so we'll go right to John.
Straight to you, yeah.
Good evening, mayor, council. Thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be here before you. Tonight, we have the Public Works team that's working on this project, and we're excited about it. Assistant Director Ariel Swift will provide you an update, and resource management supervisor Jake Jansen and myself are here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ariel Swift, Assistant Public Works Director. Where's this button? Okay, I'm sorry. No one knows where it is. Okay. Ariel Swift, Assistant Public Works Director here. So, very exciting, huge project, huge undertaking, the solid waste carts implementation. We gave an update in November, so this is kind of another update. The project team spans multiple departments, public information office, again, every aspect of their department is involved in this, from the media to social media, GIS, putting flyers together. They've been a really big help. Geospatial information, GIS is a huge piece of it as we do our cart audit to ensure that we're getting carts to the right people who need them. Public Works management team, as you see here, Public Works Solid Waste Crews, and kind of the unseen crew is the Public Works Street Crew. So when there's not snow, they've had some extra time since they do eight hours on split shifts, so they go out and they've been doing this cart audit and collecting this data so we can have clean data going into this. And you can see, that's a picture that they took of themselves during the cart audit I put up there. Deliveries by month, we had a huge waitlist in anticipation for the carts in August, and we did minimize that. We got quite a few out. As we have dwindled down in 48s and 64 gallons for our inventory, you can see our deliveries have decreased quite a bit. Some of that is intentional. We didn't want to have people introduce a cart during winter with ice and snow and them also trying to figure out, okay, what's the best way to, to work this into their own, I guess, process of putting the trash out and bringing it back to their house. And, you know, it might sound simple if you live in a very flat neighborhood, but if you have stairs or hills or any other obstacle, cars, dense area, it, it can be a big impact. So we wanted to make sure that those individuals had, only had to worry about snow for the time being and ice and didn't have to worry about those carts. So we'll expect this to ramp up. Our current inventory, as you can see, is pretty much all 35 gallons. We got a huge delivery in February of 7,035 gallon carts. We are currently, as of the end of February, through our 48, 64, and 96 gallon carts and have started compiling a waitlist for those. Here's that waitlist. 96 waiting for 64 gallon carts, and we're seeing a lot of interest in the 48 gallon as well. Here are the current carts in service, so this is an estimation based on the data that we had before, and we are verifying that in the field. So here's what that kind of looks like. So this was about 50% of the way through the cart audit. As of this afternoon, they've collected over 15,000 carts, pictures, data. It's, they did over 400 locations today alone, so they're like flying through this stuff. in the field. So here's what that kind of looks like. So this was about 50% of the way through the cart audit. As of this afternoon, they've collected over 15,000 carts, pictures, data. It's, they did over 400 locations today alone. So they're like flying through this stuff. They're, they've been amazing. So this is a dashboard that we created in ArcGIS, so the management team can kind of keep up to date on, okay, where do we need to go? Where do we need to send the crews to capture the information? And then we overlaid that information with Nikki's cart verification application. So what she did was she took all of the utility billing, what people were being charged for, overlaid that with what we're capturing in the field and then matching that up. And then any discrepancies, the management team, AKA Jake, would follow up one-on-one with to make sure that people are actually getting charged for what they're paying for or not getting charged for what they're not paying for or what they are. Now I just confused myself. Onto the next. Outreach and education. So utility bill insert on right sizing. Their carts did go out in the January and February and then earlier this month, I'm not sure if you saw it, but there was a release for the cart video on proper set out and right sizing and that went out on social media, our website, and a news release. In April, starting April 3rd, that Monday, we will distribute carts with an educational flyer. And part of that is also when we deliver it, we will be maneuvering them in a way that says, okay, it's delivered now, this is kind of how you need to put it out. So it's facing the right way, it's in the, what would normally be their curbside pickup location or alleyway, if that's where their, their collection area is. But we'll be setting it out in a way that we would hope that they would set it out for our crews. Like I said, February delivery, it's kind of hard to see on the front screen, but you can see these are all of the carts that are stacked up and just waiting for delivery. There is a little bit of prep work that needs to be done. Our plan is to rent out a box truck so that we can put these together in the field because they don't stack very well if they have wheels on them already. So we'll have a couple of teams out at a time to deliver these carts. One team will be putting them together and then they'll maneuver through town together and hopefully get them all delivered by the end of April. So upcoming operations, April, step one, begin and continue deliveries. Outreach and education. So again, that educational flyer will be with the cart when it's delivered and, and we'll also be setting it out how they need to set it out. Step two, finalize any deliveries or swap outs that we're able to do. Analyze any swap out data. So if you get a 35 and you try it out for a couple of weeks or a couple of months, we recommend trying it out for three months. That way you get a good routine in with it. But if you still need to swap that information or that cart out, we're going to analyze that information before we do the next cart order. So we can make sure that we don't have an abundance of one size and not enough of another. So hopefully we can kind of work through that, which is another great reason why using GIS is really awesome. So July to August, the next round of carts would arrive, we'll assemble, prep, and deliver those and remove any waitlist that is there first. That shouldn't take as long as this round, since we have 7,000 carts to go through. The next round should only be about 4,000, 5,000. August and November, we'll continue education on proper set out. I know Public Information Office already has some videos they're working on and just waiting to be released at the right times for this, this information and educational piece. And then we'll also have in the fall, delivery of our two, our next two automated side loaders. And that is all. Any particular questions you have, we will put Jake in the hot seat.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ariel. All right. Any questions or discussion?
A question for Jake in the hot seat.
Hey, I'll step into it.
Most recently, I was contacted by a resident who is, she and her husband are in their 80s and they are very challenged even to pull, I think, that 35, the smallest one, up their, what they call their, their sculpting or their rising or declining driveway. And so I was just wondering, where and how are you guys set up for those residents that really cannot maneuver one of those carts and are just really comfortable putting out, I think they put out like a bag, you know, maybe a week kind of thing, or they don't have a lot of garbage from what she had mentioned to me. So I just appreciate knowing what they can do or where they call because she said she called and she couldn't get a good response back. So just wanted to help.
Yeah, so we're in the process of developing a procedure that might look like a door service. It's not finalized yet, but for certain individuals that don't have family members or roommates that can deliver their, their trash carts to the curb or have any physical disability, we would offer that service to specific individuals. Now, it's not something we want everybody taking advantage of. We want folks to bring their materials to the curb if they're able to and if not, we're going to work with everyone on it.
So maybe I can connect with you and give you the name and maybe that could be your, your test, your pilot. Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to add a little, maybe a little bit more to that. We are looking at some type of service. We don't know exactly what it would be. Jake talked about one type, there may be other ones out there. One of the advantages of being one of the last cities to do something, we do have, we do have a lot of connections throughout the state and they've all, you know, been through this before. So we're looking to see what their policies are. It's not unique. Our terrain is unique to some areas in, in the state, but the issues are still the same. So we'll continue to work on that and we'll work with our legal department and our city manager and, and we'll come up with solutions. So right now, you know, we want to hear about those things and we'll definitely take that input and come together and address that in some way or the other.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure the residents would appreciate the communication from you too. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others?
All right. Well, I'm, I'm definitely happy with what I'm seeing as far as the process is going. I mean, this is, this is a huge undertaking and we knew it last year when we were talking about this and putting this in the budget for this year, that this was going to be a big deal to have to make this change. It's big for the community, it's really different, but we also have a step-by-step process that you and your professional team are working through to be able to get this done and we appreciate it. It's good to hear that we're, we've got multi-phases coming in there and then we've got more side loaders coming. So as this rolls out in the next year, it sounds to me like people are going to have a really solid idea of how this is going to work and how it's going to look for them personally in the city. So thank you very much for all your work on it. Appreciate you being here tonight. So we have a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passed at 7-0.
Action item number two is emergency preparedness railway incidents presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
All right, we got a motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Go straight to them. All right. When you're ready, sir.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Tom Berger of the Dubuque County Emergency Management Coordinator. Corey, how do I do this?
I didn't want to have to turn down the lights like Wally did, so.
We can do it if you need the effect, just so you know.
So I appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk a little bit about a kind of high level on our emergency preparedness. Although this is requested due to the railway incidents and, you know, that we're seeing across the nation, we really, as you heard me say many times, we use a multi-hazard approach to, to responding to incidents. A lot of times, it doesn't matter where, how the incident happened, our response to it and our training and preparation for the response or the incident is the same. So some of the emergency planning organizations that are, are critical when we come to hazardous materials incidents, our Dubuque County Local Emergency Planning Committee meets and, and that handles a lot of the hazardous materials operations training and the grants for hazmat that come in to the county from the state of Iowa. And that includes both planning and training. Actually, right now, the hazmat, a lieutenant from the hazmat team is teaching 18 volunteer firefighters, they're just finishing up this week, a 16-hour operations class, which will train the, the volunteer fire departments, fire, new firefighters who have less than two years of experience on the departments, to be able to respond to these incidents and, and know what to do and, and mainly, more importantly, keep themselves safe and not do anything that's going to cause any further incident, which is really what we do when we come to a major hazmat call. The local, the LEPC is made up of local elected officials, public works, law enforcement, media, fire, hazmat, EMS, health, the hospitals. And it's really a collaborative group of entities that are there for emergency planning purposes. So they meet at least twice a year and otherwise as needed. And we also provide, through the, the training facility, we do have an LEPC fund that was established that allows us to provide other training opportunities, whether it be for the, the Dubuque Fire Department hazmat team or other local emergency responders as they come about or as the training comes about and if they wouldn't have budget money for it. So that's all coordinated through the LEPC. Our Dubuque Community Awareness and Emergency Response, our Dubuque Care Group, I'll go into that a little more towards the end of the presentation because that's really specific to what we're talking about tonight, as well as the, you know, the Dubuque Fire and Police Departments, as well as mutual aid departments that would come in to assist, you know, through the mutual aid agreement, as well as we have the local county mutual aid agreement, as well as we're part of the State of Iowa Mutual Aid Compact or the IMAC, where we could put out a request for, if the fire department would need additional resources from other hazmat teams across the state, we could request that to, for them to come in and assist us as well as, you know, if, if they had an incident, we could send personnel over to help them, personnel and equipment if, if that was available. Some of the emergency plans, the commodity flow studies, we update that every three to four years and that gives us a good snapshot of what's going through the community. We get the information, which going up the Mississippi River, as well as they, they do assessments at different areas of the highways, you know, like dodging locusts where they're coming across the bridge, they'll take and get the information from the trailers, the, the placards and run that information. So it gives us a good snapshot there, as well as the railroad. We request that information from the railroad and they'll tell us, you know, on an annual basis, how much hazardous cargo is going through the community. With, we have our comprehensive emergency management plan and in part of that plan, ESF-10 or Emergency Support Function 10, is the hazardous materials annex, which is updated annually. It's brought in front of the local emergency planning committee and that's submitted to the state for, for approval. We also have a city evacuation plan that was developed through the police department years ago, through, through a grant from the federal government. All the fire departments also have hazardous materials operations plans, you know, specific to hazmat response. And we also, another plan that we do is the hazard analysis and risk assessment or vulnerability assessment plan. So that gives us an idea, that's updated two to, or every three to four years as well. And that gives us an idea of some of the vulnerabilities that we have, not just with hazardous materials incidents, but, you know, thunderstorms, tornadoes and, and whatever. So whatever the event is, that gives us an idea and it's scored and rated on a federal scale, so we're able to direct our training, our planning and our exercise to, to those identified hazards, so we're ready to go. And this is a typo on the comprehensive emergency management plan, I have that up above, but that's supposed to be our multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, which we're currently going to be in the rewrite for this, over the next year. So our training preparedness, we've done an awful lot with the railroads. They come in, they've done our, our Railroad 101 for our safety, for our emergency responders. And what that is, it's a class that talks about how we communicate with railroads, what we can expect from, from the railroads after there's an incident, how long it's going to take them to get there. What information can we get them while they're on their way in to better prepare them and to better, better prepare us and get resources ready for them when they, when they arrive? Response to the railroad emergencies, the working components of the railroad. So they'll give us all the police, fire, EMS, all the first responders, the information of how to be safe when working on the railroad and around the railroad. The, also locomotives are quite a, a thing in themselves and, and a safety hazard and, it's not something that we respond to or work around every day. So to be able to have that information and training from the railroad on what to do if we have an incident with a locomotive, that's all, all done through this Railroad 101 and a derailment scene size up and management is also addressed in the, in the Railroad 101. We, we offered that in 2015 and repeated it in 2018 and also last January had three classes out at the training center to cover the three shifts from the Dubuque Fire Department so they were able to, to attend and, and get new members through that as well as kind of refresh on it. Because again, it is something that we don't deal with on, on a regular basis, kind of like a car accident or transportation incident. Also the training, again, I mentioned the hazardous materials operation classes, a 24-hour class that's going on right now for the volunteers and the, the new recruits at the Dubuque Fire Department recently completed that as well. And then the hazmat team also has a technicians class, which is an 80-hour class. So they're the, the folks that can come into the incidents with higher level training and, and mitigate the incidents. So, and there's a lot when it comes to an incident as far as a, a train, train derailment or a train incident. We've, we've had a couple in our area and sometimes, you know, what we can do is just stop, evacuate, keep everybody away from there. Sometimes when you see the fire, that's one thing, you know, as a fire department, you always want to put water on the fire, but some, some cases, it's not, not the right thing to do. So you have to step back at a hazmat incident, look at it, get as much information on, on what's involved and then go forward that way. So we had a great working relationship between the volunteer fire departments and the City of Dubuque Fire Department hazmat team. So then we appreciate that relationship. Again, one of the most important things that we can do, as I said, is isolate the incident and then start evacuating people if we have to. Once we find out what's involved in, whether it's a railcar that's involved or if it's a semi-tractor trailer, all the emergency vehicles and a lot of the public works vehicles even have the emergency response guidebooks in the, in the vehicle and that is, they can look up a placard and it'll give them, you know, worst case scenario. And, and really an important thing is if, if it's something that you should put water on if it's burning, that's important for the fire department, but also evacuation distance. How far do we need to go away? Is it a half mile? Is it a mile? So those all come through there, but one of the ways that we're going to use, once we find that information out, we want to alert the public and that's how we're going to do it through the Alert Iowa system, is one of the tools that we can use, as well as the regular door-to-door knocking and, and getting people away from the scene and securing the traffic away from there. So again, the push for the Alert Iowa and getting people signed up for that. Some of the other responses specific to hazmat team, there's some programs that they have, the Cameo, Marplot and Aloha. So these integrate into GIS as well as the National Weather Service. So we can take and the hazmat team can put, if we have whatever the incident is, which way the weather, the wind's blowing, and then that also changes our evacuation area. What's a downwind downstream, we have to evacuate and, and keep the, keep the people and move, move them away from there. So those are all tools. So those are all tools that are available to the fire and hazmat folks, as well as the emergency response guidebooks that I talked about, have them their electronic as well as the hard copy. We also receive a high hazard freight train report from the state of Iowa Emergency Response Commission. So that comes to us on a regular basis, which will tell us that there's three trains or how many trains are coming through our community that are considered to be a highly high hazard train, whether, and most of them in our area obviously are the crude oiler, the mostly ethanol and that type of cargo that are going through the area. We also can request from the railroads, the hazardous materials density study. So that'll give us over a longer snapshot and that's what we roll into our commodity flow study, the number of different trains and what would be coming through the area, the chemicals. We're gathering all now the tier two reports for fixed facilities. We have a lot of fixed facilities in Dubuque County, so they're required by March 31st to send us what type of hazardous materials they have in there, stores, shops, factories. So we're getting that information in now that all goes into a database that's available as we respond to incidents there. Again, the GIS and then one of our real important partners in one of a hazardous materials incident is the National Weather Service. So we're almost on the phone immediately with them to get the wind direction, how long is it going to stay there? Is the wind going to change? Is, are we going to start getting rain? You know, so there's numerous things with the weather. So we'd almost be on an hourly call getting updates directly from the National Weather Service. And then first responders have a real cool application that goes on their phone. It's called Ask Rail. After they complete the railroad 101, you can download that, put it on your smartphone and then that'll give us all the information that is on a train car. So each car has a specific number. We can pop that in and it'll show us immediately how many gallons of product is on there and what type it is. So that's, if we can get close enough and now with the drone technology that's available to us through the police and fire department, that is one of the things we would put up right away, get them pictures and get that information to the responding railroad company. And one thing about the railroad company, we have the three class one railroads in our area, the CN, the CP are on the Iowa side and then the Burlington Northern in Wisconsin goes across the other side of the river, Illinois and Wisconsin. But they are all competitors, but when it comes to a railway incident, their hazmat folks, they train together, they would respond together and they help and kind of have that mutual aid system as well amongst the railroad companies, their hazmat techs that come in. So that's real important to us. So that leads me into the care group that we talked about. This started probably 10 years ago and it's community action or community awareness and emergency response. Dubuque has one, they're situated all up and down the Mississippi River. There's one to the north, La Crosse and Clinton and Davenport have one. And what they do, the railroads come in and they supply us with a trailer that's here that we can use. Obviously it's mainly for incidents on the railroad. It's got a lot of equipment to respond to, a response involving the river. But we can also use it and we have used it for other incidents that are land based that have nothing to do with railroad or have nothing to do with the river. We can use the trailer, use the equipment and replace it as we go. So this, and what it really did was we meet quarterly. The Assistant Fire Chief Josh Napper is the co-chair of the Dubuque Care Group along with one of the representatives from CP, the hazmat response coordinator out of Milwaukee. And we do, they do trainings, we've had numerous meetings, but it gets all these groups together and that's just a few of them that are involved that you see on the screen there with their public-private partnerships. But the quarterly meetings and trainings prove to be very important as far as when it comes to an emergency response. You know, one of the sayings in the business is at the incident scene is not the time to be exchanging the business cards. You want to make sure you know the people you're working with, that they understand our capabilities, we understand their capabilities and really we want to start an incident and not do anything that's going to cause them further. You know, we don't want to go to an incident and do something that's going to cause more problems down the road. So our care group was established, it's a first response network of resources, fixed base and public and private. Local participation is key to this, otherwise we wouldn't have the trailer sitting here if the fire department didn't jump in and really get involved with it when it started. They provide training, they do have done numerous trainings involved in the river as far as cleaning up from incidents. The high value resource areas, again, they do a lot of talking about the river, the sensitive areas where the different areas along the river that you really need to be careful of if you want to divert some of the hazmat, if it gets into the river, away from them areas, provides access to shared response resources again. I know if we had an incident here involving the railroad, the trailers from the care groups in Davenport and La Crosse are probably going to be on their way right away to, to help us. And they're always exercising and reviewing the plans and capabilities. And one of the things we always look at too is you mentioned the after-action reports. So with the event that's going on now in Ohio, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of after-action reports that come out of that incident, you know, what worked, what didn't work and how can we bring that back here, train our emergency responders and also roll that into our plans. Some of the other care group response, again, assisted in two of the rail incidents, the one up north and the one across. They also responded with the trailer to the pipeline terminal release in the Catfish Creek that happened from out of BP a few years ago. And then also the storm sewer released from the vehicle accident that was down in the port of Dubuque, I believe. So the care group also helps with that. Some of the tabletop exercises that we conducted, we did an EOC interoperability exercise up along all the EOCs that are active up along the river, Mississippi River up all the way into southern Minnesota. Again, I talk about that's the Microsoft Teams presentation was the inland sensitivity atlas that was put on by the EPA in the upper Mississippi River Basin and then road-based response exercise to an anhydrous ammonia release. We're starting in the early discussions of next year, we want to work with Jackson County and the Region 6 LEPC to conduct a full-scale exercise involving a train along the CP rail line. So we're just setting up a meeting on that hopefully here in the next couple of weeks to do that in FY '24. So this is just, the one picture there is they have a railcar familiarization trailer where they bring in all the different valving systems that you'll find on the different railcars. So you can see in that picture, the trainer there is from the Burlington Northern Santa Fe, but again, him and Tony from CP put on the training for emergency responders. So understanding what kind of valving is on the different types of trailers, which ones are pressure vessels and which ones are regular freight and how to identify them. So and then also that's one of the care group trailers there out at the training facility showing some of the boom and the other stuff that we have in there. So again, the partnership, this care group that started probably 10 years ago is really beneficial for our emergency responders, the training they provide, the contacts that are the hazardous goods officers, their cell phone, they'll answer it pretty much 24/7. So if we have something, no matter whose rail line it's on or if it's something fixed base that we have a question on, they're there to answer, provide that guidance and support to us. So we look forward to continuing that relationship with them. So that's what I have for the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, Tom. Any discussion or questions for Tom? Go ahead, Wethel.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do. I have to say after I met with you and after I've met with all of those who serve in this manner, I feel a great sense of stability and faith that if these things happen, there's a lot of collaboration that already exists and that doesn't happen, I know, in a lot of communities. And so I'm grateful for everyone's participation in that because I know it takes effort. So thanks. The high hazard freight train notification system, just out of curiosity, is that a real-time report that you receive? Is that a reflection on the last month, how many cars went through?
It's a weekly report that comes out from the CN and the CP that they'll send our way and say in the last week, there were X amount of trains that came through that met that hazardous criteria. And again, mostly what we have is the ethanol trains that come through here. So it's more recent than we do our commodity flow studies. So it's kind of a, but it's a little less information too. It's a snapshot of it, what type of chemicals, and then they put an attachment with it for the, basically right out of the emergency response guide, you know, so it's there at the.
And if I can ask a follow-up question, with the anticipation that we may see more rail traffic, is this something that specifically you anticipate we will have to, I don't want to say prepare even more, but is that going to be, is the volume of traffic going to impact what you do in the future in the next, say, five years?
I think, you know, it's just like anything else. If you have more cars going down the highway, you're going to have more chance for an accident. But they also, if they have more trains going through, they have more requirements too, as I understand it from the Federal Railway about their inspections that they do. I'm not an expert in what the exact inspections are, but there is information that they provide to us on a regular basis. They're using technology to better find the, you know, when they have a hot box or a bearing going out on one of the trains. So, you know, I think the danger is there, obviously with anything, but I mean, it's, people use freight and rail because it's a safe way of transporting the goods that they have on there. It's a safe way to do that. So, I mean, we might have to adjust our plans a little bit, but really the what's, we'll have to wait and see obviously what will come through if the merger goes through.
Thanks.
So that report comes after, not before.
I'm sorry?
The report, the high?
Yeah, right. We get them like a week after, you know.
They don't let us know that stuff's coming through, they just?
Right.
Tell us that it did.
It's an idea of what's going.
So we have a sense of the volume over time?
And a lot of that, you know, some of that sensitive stuff too, they don't want to know for security reasons.
Sure, sure. Yeah, well, that's understandable. Yeah, I can see where they're coming from there. But it gives us a sense of the volume over time to be able to know what we need to prepare for in general.
Exactly.
Okay.
And, you know, if we start seeing, you know, obviously we've done a lot of training for ethanol because we have the ethanol plants and the biodiesel plants, but if we start seeing a bunch of other chemicals come through, you know, then that might prompt us to train to that level and get more information on them cars that are coming through.
Mm-hmm.
So that'd probably be the thing we need to watch and keep paying on for the response side.
So I have one more question. Are the railroad companies required to tell us if there's any areas of the rail that are problematic or need repair or anything like that, like anything that we need to be looking out for so we know certain areas to pay extra attention to, or is that not something that we get information on?
I have not received any information on that. I think that's all governed by the Federal Rail Administration and how many times and really on the number of trains that go through depends on what type of inspections they have to do.
Yeah.
But I have not ever, I don't know, I imagine that information's confidential with the railroad, but I can, I can ask Tony or?
Yeah, I was just curious if there's any, I mean, if we get sort of, I guess I'm wondering what kind of heads up we get, you know, for?
They're really proactive with some of the stuff they use now with the ultrasounds and the laser technology that goes on there that, you know, they can, I think it was one of the figures they use, like 95% of the bearing issues they can figure out in advance now due to technology and some of the equipment that they're doing on the inspections on a weekly basis. So.
Got it. Well, I know we really appreciate you giving us this presentation, especially at this time. I mean, people are definitely on high alert for all the right reasons and being concerned about what they just saw in Ohio. And I think it is, you know, one of the things that I recognize and I, you know, try to think pragmatically about stuff like this, we've been partners with the railroad for a very long time in this city and we really have had very few accidents over that period of time. It's gone really well. We prepare really well, which I really appreciate knowing about. And what I'm looking forward to as we, our, one of our partners just got larger, you know, as we saw, we just, there was a consent item earlier, talking, just an update on the rail merger. I mean, as that happened, we have now a company that is much larger to work with and I look forward to them being good partners. I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to have open communication, open discussions so that if anything were to happen, God forbid, we have quick response, quick communication with all of you because I trust you to get your job done. I know how hard you're training, I see what you're doing, you tell us about it frequently. You were just here a couple of weeks ago talking about it. So, you know, we appreciate all that, but what we hope for is that we can keep that seamless communication as we add to another partner here along with that. So thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate the time you spent tonight. Okay, with that, we had a motion by Rousell, second by Sprank to receive and file and hear that presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is Grand River Center Management Agreement with Global Spectrum LP doing business as OVG 360 approval. And I will just note that we also have a presentation with this item, so I'd recommend the motion include view the presentation.
Thank you very much, Adrian.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file, we view the presentation and approve.
Second. We got a motion by Farber and a second by Jones. Mike, am I coming to you this time? All right, Mike, please.
City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware is recommending approval of the Grand River Center Management Agreement between the City of Dubuque and Global Spectrum LP, also known as OVG 360. The Grand River Center Conference and Education Center Operations Management Services RFP Request for Proposals was released to solicit sealed competitive proposals from qualified professional management firms capable of providing a full range of comprehensive management services with a well-proven track record of services consistent with generally accepted operation of a first-class conference and education center. The RFP Committee was approved and consists of the following members: Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware, Assistant City Manager Corey Burbach, Assistant City Attorney Jason Lehman, Keith Ray, Director of Travel Dubuque, Julie Kronloggi from Travel Dubuque, and Project and Facilities Manager Gerald Charlton. Three firms submitted proposals. Unanimous, highest-ranked firm chosen based upon all aspects of the request for proposal and meeting the city's goals and objectives is OVG 360. OVG 360 is a division of Oakview Group. OVG 360 is a full-service venue management and hospitality company. Late last year, OVG completed an acquisition of Spectra, growing their venue management and booking portfolio to over 230 venues, including 59 convention centers, with most of their clients being public entities, including cities, counties and states. In Iowa, OVG has management agreements with three convention centers, the Community Choice Credit Union Convention Center and Hy-Vee Hall at the Iowa Event Center, both in Des Moines, the Waterloo Convention Center at Sullivan Brothers Plaza in Waterloo, and the Tyson Event Center and Orpheum Theater in Sioux City. They also manage the Extreme Arena and Green State Family Field House in Correville, Iowa. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval and Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware is here to give a presentation. approval, and Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware is here to give a presentation.
Marie, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Marie Ware, Leisure Services Manager for the City of Dubuque. Thank you for allowing me to do this presentation this evening. So, from a history standpoint, Grand River Center was opened in October of 2003, so we're very nearing the 20th year of the Grand River Center. Platinum Hospitality Group LLC has been the operations manager and had the operations management agreement since its opening. The city council set as one of their high priorities, looking at the Grand River Center management. The actions identified were to do a request for proposal, have direction, and an agreement. And so, that's what you're seeing tonight as a culmination of the work of that city council high priority. As Mike mentioned, or the city manager mentioned, the RFP committee, and he mentioned all of them by name, so I won't go through them again, but they were very active within this process. And we also engaged Bill Kruger, and if any of you remember, that's our Senior Vice President of CSL International, who has also helped us with our Five Flags work in the past, being an expert in the field of, obviously, convention, sports, and leisure. When we started this RFP process, it was very important to us to do exactly what is listed up on that slide, to find the qualified professional management firm capable of that full range of management services, well-proven track record, and particularly the services consistent with a first-class operation of a conference and education center. We identified in the RFP high-level goals, as well as other goals that we wanted to achieve and objectives. And so, these are the overarching ones that I have selected for this slide, first and foremost being how to be able to maximize a direct benefit, the direct spending benefit that helps our Dubuque economy. Secondly, the other important major item that we talked about throughout the RFP, the interview process and every step of the way, is maximizing that economic development or economic impact with a mix of events. So, being able to make sure that we had a wide range of events that would be a part of the portfolio as we moved forward. Partnering with Travel Dubuque, our hotels, our tourist destinations was critical. As you know, we are very partnership-oriented, and that was very important to us, the superior service and the customer service satisfaction of being able to maximize that and increase that, as well as to enhance those relationships for anything from citywide events to trade shows to meetings and those kinds of things. The RFP outlines several pages of goals and objectives, but this is the high-level ones of those. So, when we, as the RFP reviewers, were going through each of the proposals we received, this is what we were looking at. We were looking at these types of things, and what was the proposals from the firms that really went to that when we did our questionnaires, when we did our presentations from them. We were listening for all of these aspects, and we also kept all of this as we were doing the negotiations to make sure that the agreement that you see in front of you tonight addresses all of these. We had three submissions that were given to our, or provided through the RFP process, and that, and these are just in alphabetical order. And so, Global Spectrum, and that's OVG 360, Platinum Hospitality Group, and Venue Works. We, as we said, or as I said, we engaged that third party of, Bill Kruger with CSL to be able to also do a review separately from the committee of the proposals. So, we did what we could look at, but then we had this industry expert that was also looking at these proposals and scoring them and being able to help us with that. He has performed this service for a number of communities throughout the country and brought that knowledge not only to the review, but also in helping us with the negotiations process. The RFP committee was unanimous in their recommended top-scoring firm throughout every step of the process, and that top-scoring firm was OVG 360. And why, why was that? So, OVG 360, as they came in through their proposal and each step of the way, really laid out the best proposal and the action plans to us, to be able to build upon the past successes of attracting conventions and businesses, business meetings, and bring outside dollars into our community while balancing that with all the things we also know and love that are part of the Grand River Center, of those special events, trade shows, consumer shows, the banquets, the weddings, the meetings, different sports competitions, galas, and so, all kinds of activity, including the social, corporate, and nonprofit sectors. The proposal specifically laid out strategies and tactics to be able to get to that event mix that took all that into consideration. And when you look at their strategies and what they lined up for us, these strategies also line up with your city council goals, and that's in the economic development, the robust local economy, partnering for a better Dubuque, being fiscally responsible, high-performing, and obviously, sustainable environment as well. One of the things of being involved with a company like OVG 360 is to be able to have a corporate environment where there's a dedicated convention division. And so, there are many people that specialize within that area of service, and that's what OVG 360 has through this. So, throughout the process, from day one of the proposal all the way to today and beyond, we've had the Senior Vice President, and her, she's pictured there and is here tonight with us, Shira Garnett, as well as the District General Manager, Carrie Jackson, who also is here tonight, and then others from their team that have been working with us side by side, and bringing that expertise of being able to have run convention centers across the country. So, what about OVG 360? They're a full-service venue management and hospitality company. As I said, they laid out the best proposals and action plans to help us continue to build. Their emphasis is on working not only with local and regional organizations, but creating a successful destination package where market, mark, the, where meeting planners and organizers and attendees want to come. And they also proposed working with Travel Dubuque, The Chamber, Greater Dubuque Economic Development Corporation, as well as working with, and this was a, I thought, a very interesting, that they would work with our local arts, museums, attractions, for that overall marketing strategy and cross collaborations of campaigns. As many of you know, if you've gone to other places, there's always those social events, those other activities that you do, different conferences want to see different things within your local area, and they really laid out a nice plan to be able to do that, but also talked about stay-and-play packages and overall branding and how to bring that all together. They also discussed with us about self- and co-promoted events that they would look at, either things that have been in this area, or maybe bring some new ideas to this area and to the Grand River Center. The sales and marketing was also very important and something that we were looking for, and they had good short- and long-term goals related to that, including things like the branding, the website, the social media, and how that they would work through all of that. As I said, we're a part of a regional network, and so, Mike had mentioned in his memo about some of the different spaces they have in our general neighborhood, and so, these are just some of the areas that were mentioned and are close by. So, I'll share, mostly when we talk about the agreement, I'll share about the financial sides of the agreement in this presentation. If you read the agreement, there's many other details that are outlined, such as the definitions, the terms, the ownership and use of facility, personnel, procedures for handling income, agreement monitoring, facility contracts, and the list goes on and on, including all those legal sections like indemnification insurance. And I personally call that the blah-blah-blah section, because I deal in the other part, but those, those pieces of the legal part of it are very, very important to us. And so, the agreement itself has an initial five-year term with a five-year renewal as an option. It has a management fee of $150,000 a year. And you might ask, well, how does that compare? Well, our Schmidt Island Development Corporation, that we just recently had a, an agreement that we did with them as a city, that has a $100,000 management fee for management of Schmidt Island, and particularly, that includes the ICE arena at this point in time. And we also have an ASM Global Management Fee for a part of their management of Five Flag Civic Center, that in fiscal year '24 is going to be $120,937. So, just to give you an idea of how that relates to what we currently have at this time. Also, there is incentives that are built into this, and this is a, something that you have to be very careful of, and this is where we involve the Bond Council for the city in, because there are certain ways you can do incentives and other ways that we can't do incentives in order to protect ourself, to make sure that we can continue to do tax-free bonds. So, this is based upon the event revenue, and so, the event revenue benchmark that we've agreed to within this, that's proposed tonight for you, is a benchmark of $1.8 million. And what happens is that if OVG goes over that, so, let's say they took in $1.9 million, so the difference being $100,000, there's a 20% incentive. We have the option to renegotiate that annually, but it would never be less than $1.8 million. Now, coming up with that number was a little bit challenging, because our current agreement with Platinum Hospitality is all of their books and all of their finances are separate from us. They're like a private business. That's their private proprietary information. And so, we had to work with OVG 360, not knowing what that is, but being able to look at other facilities, and that's where we involved CSL, and that's one of the things that we involve them in, is in like facilities like ours, what are tipicals? And they have that information, and so that's how we've built this. There is also a qualitative incentive, and so, that's up to $25,000 a year. There are five different items that are listed there, and what you see is those items relate to, if you remember those goals that I talked about, about what was important to us, those items relate to those items that are important to us. Now, the thing to remember is the qualitative is important, but it's probably the smaller dollar amount out of the two incentives. So, this will help us to be able to monitor and make sure that they're doing the work in these particular areas. And the $25,000 is five, there's five of them, so it's $5,000 in each one. So, they have the, if they only attain two of them, that's all it would be. If they attain all five, you would have up to the $25,000 incentive. Now, with that, the revenue incentive, so that first revenue incentive of the $1.8 million, and then the qualitative incentive has a cap on it. So, it's not that you can go to whatever amount of money that particularly is. So, it can only be, it cannot exceed the management fee. So, if the management fee is $100,000, then they can earn up to another $150,000 in order to be able to have, that is their total that they would receive. If it's less than that, it's less than that, but it can be no more than that. So, we've capped out what that would be. And then, the only thing is, is that those fees go up by a CPI, and so, that number would change each year based upon what the CPI is. OVG would receive 20% of commercial rights revenue, so currently, with our agreement with Grand River Center, there is no opportunity for sponsorships in that current agreement with Platinum. And so, that might be anything from pouring rights for a specific beverage company, or like tonight, you had, for Leisure Services, you picked a soft drink vendor, they could do the same thing, and if there was financial incentives to that, they'd receive 20%, and we would receive the rest of it. OVG is also providing a financial contribution to this partnership, and so, they have committed $300,000 to be able to put in a fund that is an event business fund, a leaseholder improvement, and/or capital improvement equipment, of which we have the opportunity to okay any of the different things they would spend that on. So, in other words, if they're looking at a conference or convention that they think is going to be really important to our community, and they'd like to bring it, but they need a little bit more to kind of entice them to come, that fund could be used for that. Or, they might come and say, if I bought X widget to be able to have here, that will allow us to make more money on something. Or, a capital improvement, again, where it's like, well, maybe we could serve people faster if we had this. Or, in the kitchen, we could make X quicker if we had this. Those are the types of things that might be used, but any one of those things are things that we have the review and opportunity for. So, how does this work out in the budget? I'm throwing out all these numbers, and how does this work out? Well, you can't, it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges. What you have to do is look at it and go, okay, how much money have we set aside in our budget every year for Grand River Center according to our current agreement with Platinum? So, our current agreement with Platinum is that we pay 50% of the gas and electric, and equivalent funding equal to 25% of the hotel motel tax of Grand Harbor, funding repairs and maintenance bills over $1,080, $1,285, and an aggregate of $19,275. So, in fiscal year '24, so actually, two nights from now, I'll be standing up here again, talking about Grand River Center, and that all totals up to be $381,998. So, that's what we've been spending on Grand River Center as the operational part to the management agreement. There are some other expenses within that budget that carry on, whether it is Platinum, OVG, or anybody else. So, this is the part that, that we've been working on. So, that's what the expenses are that we have currently in the budget. As we go into this new management agreement, we have what we call stub year. So, we go through this, this, if, if you approve tonight, April, March 31st, April 1st is this stub year, they call it. So, that's a short year. So, basically, from that time to June 30, so normally, we have a fiscal year that you see, like, for fiscal year '24, that's July 1 to June 30. So, we have this short year, stub year, they call it. So, how does that work out, then, in the budget? So, during this anticipated, we anticipated this, a, a new agreement potentially. So, we planned ahead. We were looking ahead and thinking, because we had to set the budget, I'm going to present in two nights, before we knew any of this. We knew it would be somewhat different, because we've had an agreement that's gone for a long period of time, and is based differently. So, we budgeted the normal, $381,998, so that's the number you see there that I just explained. We budgeted a little extra money, because we knew there would probably be some sort of a management fee, not knowing what it was. We budgeted this $106,391, and then, we budgeted $370,000 as just this number, where it's like, we wanted to make sure, no matter what, that within a transition year, and any potential incentives, that we had the right money set aside. So, what we have set aside right now is, as you see there, $858,389. When we, when you look at the budgets that are a part of the management agreement that's been submitted for the full year, that has that subsidy amount, that amount, and where all those things are built in, all those incentives and those different things that you saw are built in, it totals up to be $691,230. Now, I'll tell you that, if you do a transition budget, it's kind of like when, if you were going to start a new business. First year, lots of expenses. You got a lot of one-time things, a lot of things have to happen to get you started up. Second year, you're starting to get on a roll, but you still have some of those things that you're finding out, and/or things that are coming up that you need to get scheduled, or maybe in the transition, you have to build your business, so you don't have the whole group of things that are happening. And particularly, if you think of a convention center, if you've ever been involved in a, in an association, you know they plan three, four, or five years out for when they're scheduling their conferences and things like that. So, the way that it works is that first year has its highest budget, but by the time you get to that third year, that's the normalized year. That normalized year, although $381,000 is what we were, it's going to be a little bit more than that, but not greatly more than that. And so, what we're seeing here is that first negotiated year is $691,230. Second year will be a little less, third year will be a little less, minus the CPI, and of course, you know, the other things that go along with it. And so, that's how this works out. The $691, there's actually a full budget, and so, if you look in the documents, it shows, here's millions of dollars of revenue, here's millions of dollars of expenses, that's the difference. So, that's the number you're seeing there. So, if you look at the full budget that's listed here, these numbers, that's just the one-line item, because that's the piece that we have to be able to fund. They'll have... be able to fund. They'll have money coming in, they'll have money going out, this is the difference. So, that's the subsidy. And so, just as a quick summary, we have the stub year, and the stub year has a $256,895, so this first three months has that, that amount of expenditures that goes into it. Knowing this was coming up, I had been, I carried over some savings from last year in a budget amendment that you approved, so I made that request, knowing that we would probably need some money in whatever this was. And then, also, because we budgeted through July, some of the expenses that we budgeted in the number for this year are still there. So, we'll cover all that, $256, between those two funding sources, and then, as I explained, the $691 is covered by what you would approve two nights from now, and that's $858,389. So... So, next up, really, is the transition. There's this go-live. So, on March 31st at 12:01, that is the pathway that we're looking toward right now. So, OVG helped to lay out what that is to transition from one management company to another. They have done this numerous times in numerous cities, and so, they have a dedicated team of over 20 different departments within their organization, that they have calls with, and they've been working through this in order to make sure that all the different things, finance, payroll, marketing, all these things, that we're getting ready, so that we can meet that go-live date, and that they, they can take over and be able to have those events come off without a hitch, so that if you had your event, you'll have a different management company, but your event will go off just as you planned on. Their goal, as ours is, has always been to have a seamless transition of all the clients, and be able to make sure that they can do what they need to do. So, with that, I'm going to introduce Sher Garnett, and have her come up and say a few words from OVG, and then, we'll have just one short thing, and then you can have questions.
Thank you. Well, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We really appreciate it. It's an honor that we've made it this far in the process. Really want to thank Marie and her team. They've been fabulous to work with. You know, I was, I had all these notes on my phone about everything that I was going to talk about, but Marie already talked about them all, and they're all your goals. But, they really are a commitment that we have to sales and marketing, to maintaining your facility, getting your facility back to where it needs to be, and maintaining it in a manner that you and the community are proud to be a part of. It's about elevating your guests' experiences through customer service, taking care of them, and also through elevating their food and beverage, because that's a big, big part of what they take away from them. It's about being transparent in everything that we do, so that you know where your financials stand, so that you know the, the repair status of your equipment, so that you know everything, and that you have availability to all of that. And by doing all of those things, it allows us to be a good partner to you, and equally important to that is a good partner in your community, working with Travel Dubuque, working with the hotels, working with the attractions, and creating not just an experience at the convention center, but creating an experience for everyone that visits Dubuque holistically. So, with that said, I'd like to introduce part of my team, because as Marie indicated, we've had, we've been having weekly onboarding meetings with many, many people covering all of the departments. But, I have Brendan Wagner here with me. He's our general manager in Waterloo. Carrie Jackson, she is our division general manager, and she is also the assistant general manager at the Iowa Events Center, so she'll be here quite a bit. Brendan will work as a GM mentor. And then, we have Dwayne Blank, who's field services finance. So, do you have any questions for me?
Do, Marie, you mentioned one more thing you said, and then, and then maybe we can open it up for everybody's questions. Thank you very much.
All right. So, with that, I just wanted to be able to give one last thanks to Platinum Hospitality Group for their time with us, the RFP Committee for doing everything they did, Dorsey and Whitney for the bond council reviews, particularly for Jason Lehman, who's sitting here with us as assistant city attorney. We've been kind of together a lot lately. So, I do appreciate all of his efforts, and then, like I said, with Bill Krueger helping us from CSL International. So, with that, we'll entertain any questions. Thanks.
Right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Questions and discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So, Marie, I do have a question or two about some of the financing and some of the budget numbers that you had mentioned, and I just want to first off, thank the new group, and looking very much forward to the new partnership with you. It sounds like you're just really well-established in a nice, deep organization. So, we look forward to all the benefits of working with you in the future. But, Marie, you had mentioned that we have an annual budget figure that we, you know, income minus expenses, and then we pay the differential. Two questions is, in the event, and I am presuming that we will have more revenues forthcoming than that amount, we have some flexibility in that amount getting smaller on a yearly basis, so I think that's something positive that we can goal-set for. And then, thank you very much for your $300,000 capital fund, and the question is, will that be used for unique things to help our marketing and sales versus the repair and maintenance that we would go through, or the equipment that we would go through, whether it's, you know, a hobart for the kitchen or something?
Yeah. We've been discussing that internally and talking about the best way to approach it, and I think what we'll do is start off by creating a list of priorities, things that are revenue-enhancing, so that we can, you know, earn more money at the building, and then also, things that would be creative marketing, like the buy-down fund in order to get a very high-profile convention here, perhaps. And/or, you know, maybe we have to provide some sort of transportation between the hotel properties in order to get them. That might be another use of it. But certainly, sales and marketing will be a big focus of it as well. And we've already started talking about, you know, potentially, a new and updated website, and then, all the social medias and things of that nature.
Okay. Well, thank you for that creativity. It's welcomed. So, thank you, Marie.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Ware, I'd like you to just talk a little bit about, we do have a citizen with concerns, where it's a national company with global reach, and what is the local impact? I know your committee was very impressed with them, and they're, you know, I was looking at the website while we're talking about this, and it's very impressive. So, congratulations on your company. So, what is the local impact of, we have a high-powered national company coming to manage this facility?
So, from what, so from my experience, because, because I've already experienced the two different models here. So, we've had a local company that has managed it, and there are some real benefits of being able to do that. We previously, and still do, at Five Flags, have a national company. They're a national company as well. They're both in the higher ranks of, of national companies that do this work. What I can tell you about the national companies, it's that depth of bench, and that being able to call and get ideas from anybody if something is or isn't working well, steal great ideas from others, those kinds of things. But it's also the back-of-house things that are so important. It's about the safety trainings. It's about being able that, if things come up in the world, where you have negative events in the world, the bigger companies have a way to be able to look at that, be able to look at their risk management, and bring best practices to Dubuque, Iowa, in a very quick and, and very professional way. And so, there is though, that kind of trade-off that goes with it, but the benefits of being able to have that, what I call a bigger back-of-house, because one of the things you have is, we'll have local people that live here, that manage it, that are going to, either if they live here now, or will move here in the future, they're going to be the day-to-day that we deal with. But then, also, it's having the bench that's sitting here, being able to help them in any way that helps to elevate Dubuque. One of the things, when we did the interviews, that Travel Dubuque was so excited about was the idea where OVG 360 at different, they're not trade shows, what do you call them, with the conventions and stuff?
Expos?
Yeah. So, like, you know, if they're at an expo, and they're trying to look at all the meeting planners, and they're saying, hey, come to our facilities, OVG 360 might have a booth there, but they invite our Travel Dubuque people to be there with them. And being able to do that as a way to cross-market and get us into another level of those conventions, and putting us in front of some other people, when we did that, Travel Dubuque was like, that, that would be really great, because those, that's the level that we can't afford to do all by ourself, but we can be a part of the team. And so, it's examples like that, I think, that also help us in other ways that we haven't been able to currently.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to expand on that, if you don't mind. Thank you. You know, the big benefit from having a thriving conference and convention center, and so, generating more conferences and meetings and professional groups using the facility, doesn't actually come at the facility. It comes at the hotels, and the restaurants, and the museums that we have in our community. And of course, we get tax revenues from all those, but there's jobs in those places, and there's revenues. Those places need to support their operations. So, we really think partnering with a national firm like this that has a tremendous track record is going to allow us to host more events, which is going to allow us to generate more productivity for our community, not just at the facility itself.
Thank you all for the information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a legal question.
I'm sorry. We're actually, the, the public input portion is, is finished, so, no, we're, we're done with the public input portion. It's here now.
...
No, it's, it's not. We're, we're back here at the table right now, so. Next up.
Well, I, I...
Sir, I'm going to ask you to stop, please. Please. We're back here at, we're discussing this at the table. You had your chance for public input, so now, we're, we're discussing this. I'm going to bring it back here, and we're going to discuss. Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. One of the things that I was impressed with was that the RFP Committee, and, and knowing who was on that committee, was unanimous in the recommendation throughout with the top scores for this firm throughout the process. So, that was really impressive. One of the things that was important to me, and one of our local nonprofits reached out to me, I know a lot of our nonprofits have their annual galas at the center, and I noticed that one of your requirements is community involvement, and I just kind of wondered what your approach was in working with local nonprofits.
Well, really, at the end of the day, your approach is our approach. So, we, we aim and we strive to do all of our, you know, policies and guidelines in the manner that is reflective of the goals that you've established. So, if it's, you know, coming up with a nonprofit package, or nonprofit, you know, specials, where there's discounted rates on certain days or anything, I mean, as long as this group, you know, recognizes that, that that does come with some impact to the bottom line, but there's also community impact that's very important. So, we'll do it however you'd like us to structure it. As far as community involvement goes, we really encourage all of our teams to, you know, be part of the Chamber of Commerce, you know, be on the Young Professionals Committee, you know, get involved in this group or that group. Volunteer and put your group together, to go pick up trash along the riverbed, whatever it might be, you know, could be building, helping to build a house for, you know, Habitat or something, anything like that. But we really celebrate that with our teams, and we encourage it. And at the end of the day, you know, it's part of the way that we review, look at and review, you know, their performance within a community.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Wethel.
Ms. Garnett, I appreciated the information, and Marie, in the transition plan. Could you speak just publicly about the transition plan when it comes to onboarding of employees? The transition, I know I've received some kind of what's going to happen to my event kind of experience question, and, and what that will be like?
So, yeah, the, lots of moving components to the transition. Last week, I said it's been like drinking from a fire hose. You know, it's just like, all the moving pieces that you have to deal with. But on the employee transition, our goal has always been to try to retain as many employees as is possible. We had our HR department in, our, our senior VP of HR in last week, Nicole, and she was at the building attempting to meet with employees, and, and just talk a little bit about OVG, and help them understand where to go apply, and things of that nature, so that we could help facilitate that. We also have HR coming in. She actually is probably here by now, but she, their luggage didn't show up. But anyhow, she'll be here with the rest of us this week as well. And so, that'll be, you know, that ongoing transition of attempting to offer jobs and employment to everyone. It's, it's our, our hope, you know, is to create an even better work environment for the employees, with benefits and, you know, additional resources, so that they, so that you're taking care of your human resources is one of the most valuable capitals we have. It's people, and we're in a people business. When it, with regard to the events, we have said all along that our messaging to the clients is, you know, we're transitioning to a new management company, but the terms of your contract remain intact. So, whatever that they've been agreed to, you know, historically or in the past, or currently, I mean, that's what we're obligated to live by. And so, our goal is to minimize as many disruptions to that client as we possibly can, and we'll be picking up the phone and calling all of them.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm really liking what I see in this agreement. I mean, this, this seems to me like, I mean, and you have, as far as the RFP dream team that you put together to be able to do this, I mean, that is an incredible group of people to be able to make this decision. So, I, I'm, I'm excited to vote for, for this contract, or for this agreement to move forward, and to be able to continue this transition. I know it's a little bit wonky that we're doing the budget presentation after the fact, but I appreciate you giving us a heads-up on some of the things that we were going to be talking about when you do come in front of us in a couple of nights. But, thank you very much for, for all the work in the transition. Thank you so much for, for what you're doing. I'm, I'm looking forward to voting for this. It sounds to me like my council colleagues are generally in the same boat. We'll find out here in a minute. But, thank you very much for the presentation this evening. So, we have a motion by Farber, second by Jones, to receive and file, approve, and then, obviously, hear the presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to action. Item number four, and before I announce the full title of that item, I just want to call attention that there is a typo in the version of the amended and restated plan in the title. The correct version is 2023.1. So, the full title of this action item is Amending Tax Increment Ordinance 28-22A for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, as amended by version 2023.1 of the amended and restated plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
We have a motion by Rousell, a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, following city council approval of version 2023.1 of the amended and restated plan, economic development director Jill Connors is recommending that the city council approve the ordinance attached hereto for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. Tax increment financing is an important tool for economic development, and we use to assist future public and private development efforts. The proposed amending ordinance would remove the division of revenues, that portion of SubArea E removed from, by version 2023.1 of the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Seeing none. We have a motion by Rousell, second by Farber, to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
A motion by Rousell, and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number five is Amending Tax Increment Ordinance for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, as amended by version 2023.2 of the amended and restated plan.
Mr. Jones.
Proceed and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance...
a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, following city council approval of version 2023.2 of the amended and restated plan, Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of the ordinance attached hereto for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. Tax increment financing is an important tool for economic development and be used to assist future public and private development efforts. The proposed amending ordinance would expand the district to include the property to be designated as SubArea S by version 2023.2 of the amended and restated urban renewal plan in the tax increment financing ordinance area of the amended and restated urban renewal plan. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion by Jones, second by Rousell, to receive and file and waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Rousell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number six is Discounted City Utilities Program and Affordable Connectivity Program Promotional Brochure.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and view the video.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank and a second by Wethel. I promise, it's a short one. We can roll that. Hey, Dubuque, I wanted to tell you about a very important resource that you may qualify for, the Discounted City Utilities Program. The City of Dubuque offers a reduction in monthly utility fees for income-qualified residents. The discount of up to 50% off base rates applies to all four city utilities. That includes your water, sanitary sewer, refuse collection, and stormwater fees. To apply, simply go online to citiodebuke.org/utilitiesdiscount and submit an application. Need some assistance? No problem. Stop by City Hall for an application or to speak with utility billing staff, or call The City of Dubuque is committed to the equitable delivery of critical services to all who call Dubuque home. If you think you may qualify, apply. If you know someone who might qualify, encourage them to apply. We want everyone who is eligible to access this important resource. Very helpful, and I appreciate City Manager Mike Van Milligan and staff for suggesting that video be made in the first place. I think it's really important that we get the word out, and thank you very much for doing that. Of course, to the Public Information Office, and, you know, a special shout-out to Mr. Chuck Harris for being the star-studded person in that video, so, all right. Any discussion? Okay. Then we have a motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number seven is Work Session Request: Demonstration of Police Use of the Public Safety Cameras.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Before I make a motion, let me just ask Mike, does 5:30 give us enough time to get the presentation in and then get here for a 6:30 meeting?
Well, that's a great question, so, you know, we probably would need a little more time because of the transportation, so if we could maybe start a little earlier, that would be great, maybe 5:15.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move that we receive and file the documents and schedule a work session for 5:15 on Monday, May 1st at City Hall, 3rd floor.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. Thanks for clarifying that, I think it's a good idea. I think it would make more sense to be able to have travel time, because I'm sure we'll have questions. Okay. All right, then. What's that?
There's a lot to see.
There is a lot to see up there, yeah. So we have a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to council member reports.
Council member reports.
Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Today, I was very lucky and very fortunate to be an AmeriCorps buddy, and I was, wanted to give a shout-out, number one, to Sarabrina for organizing it, and to my colleague, my new colleague, Marleese, who heads up the AmeriCorps program at Kennedy School. And I sat for a couple of hours and dealt with games with first graders from all four classes. So we had representative students from each class who are regular with Marleese, and it is a, she's a retired teacher, and so the objective is to learn vowels and to enhance their reading skills. So the games we played were based on guessing words that they had known previously, and their other classmates had to guess what the words were based on consonants and vowel sounds. So it was very clever and just a lot of fun, and I just want to give kudos again out to not only the school, but also to the AmeriCorps team.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for the report. I don't know if anybody can beat reading games with first graders on having a better day than Ms. Farber did, that's a pretty good one. Ms. Rousell, go for it.
Well, I also got to be an honorary AmeriCorps member one day last week at the Multicultural Family Center. I got to play career Jenga with some teens and talk about career opportunities and thinking outside the box, and I got a really cool shirt to wear too, so, it was fun.
Me too, I got a cool shirt too. I was going to wear it tonight, actually.
Well, thank you both for getting out there, that's great. All right, well, we have a closed session, so I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the council go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and real estate transactions.
Second.
A motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney of the city council we'll consult with on the issues to